Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 20th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is approximately 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But before beginning with the official business appearing on today's agenda, we do have a couple of presentations. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President. Although it's raining in Los Angeles, it's raining goodness this morning in the chamber because we have some great leaders from Japan who are here with us today.
I'm a Japanese interpreter for the group of mission visiting Los Angeles Council Chamber today. And I would like to introduce Mr. Shinoka. He's the leader of this mission of the 35 councilmen from Japan.
And women.
Of course, I'm with the women, too.
This delegation is sent by the National Government of Japan to study local issues throughout the United States and Canada. And they chose Los Angeles to come and learn a little about what we do. And what is most important of what we do is we try to listen to the public. This is the public's microphone. The council's microphones are over there, but this is where the public comes to speak.
Thank you so much. And now we hear from Taro Shuroko, the leader of the delegation of this great group. Please welcome him to the Los Angeles City Hall.
Good morning. We are the mission to study about how they run their council in the chamber in the United States as well as in Canada. And then now we are visiting Los Angeles Council today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
We are grateful to be able to observe the big day today for Los Angeles Council Chamber session. And we are going to learn during the sessions and take that study back to Japan. And each member of the councilmen and women will reflect upon their study that we observed here today. Thank you very much.
And also Hiroshi Shigaki is also a co-chair of the delegation. And at this time, I would like to ask all of you to rise and be welcomed by the Mayor, Mayor Han, by the President of the City Council, Alex Padilla, and all the city council. Please rise for your official welcome. Here, here.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Crook, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Lado, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, the Vice-Sign Padilla, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today we have with us the South Central Los Angeles Regional Center. And the reason we're doing this today is they're going to be celebrating their 30th anniversary on Friday, the 22nd. And I'd like to ask Dr. Paul Amucci and Marilyn Cotry to come up and be part of this presentation. Many of you are aware of the South Central Los Angeles -- come inside. That's it? Come on. Don't be frightened. That's it. The South Central Los Angeles Regional Center will celebrate its 30th anniversary Friday, October 22nd. They're celebrating the 30th year of educating, empowering, and advocating for individual diagnosis with developmental disabilities and their families. This center is a private, nonprofit, community-based organization. It's one of 21 regional centers that serve communities throughout the state of California. The South Central Center ensures that individuals who are eligible to receive services are assisted in reaching their potential to the highest quality of life. They provide intake assessment, diagnosis, counseling, lifelong services, coordination, and will assist in obtaining needed services when eligible criteria is met. In July 2003, the center created a specialized service unit which is housed within the Consumer and Program Services Department. Established to respond to a variety of consumer needs, the unit is made up of a variety of components. The case management for judicially-involved consumers, a law enforcement liaison which houses the Twin Tower Correction Facility, the placement coordinator who assists case management in the unit, as well as case managers in the center, the center's Department of Children and Adult Services to identify placement for consumers and various clinical consultants who provide expertise in behavioral management, nursing consultation, and facilitation of support groups for the judicially-involved. The center also facilitates by --
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 20th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is approximately 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But before beginning with the official business appearing on today's agenda, we do have a couple of presentations. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President. Although it's raining in Los Angeles, it's raining goodness this morning in the chamber because we have some great leaders from Japan who are here with us today.
I'm a Japanese interpreter for the group of mission visiting Los Angeles Council Chamber today. And I would like to introduce Mr. Shinoka. He's the leader of this mission of the 35 councilmen from Japan.
And women.
Of course, I'm with the women, too.
This delegation is sent by the National Government of Japan to study local issues throughout the United States and Canada. And they chose Los Angeles to come and learn a little about what we do. And what is most important of what we do is we try to listen to the public. This is the public's microphone. The council's microphones are over there, but this is where the public comes to speak.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
We are grateful to be able to observe the big day today for Los Angeles Council Chamber session. And we are going to learn during the sessions and take that study back to Japan. And each member of the councilmen and women will reflect upon their study that we observed here today. Thank you very much.
And also Hiroshi Shigaki is also a co-chair of the delegation. And at this time, I would like to ask all of you to rise and be welcomed by the Mayor, Mayor Han, by the President of the City Council, Alex Padilla, and all the city council. Please rise for your official welcome. Here, here.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Crook, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Lado, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, the Vice-Sign Padilla, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today we have with us the South Central Los Angeles Regional Center. And the reason we're doing this today is they're going to be celebrating their 30th anniversary on Friday, the 22nd. And I'd like to ask Dr. Paul Amucci and Marilyn Cotry to come up and be part of this presentation. Many of you are aware of the South Central Los Angeles -- come inside. That's it? Come on. Don't be frightened. That's it. The South Central Los Angeles Regional Center will celebrate its 30th anniversary Friday, October 22nd. They're celebrating the 30th year of educating, empowering, and advocating for individual diagnosis with developmental disabilities and their families. This center is a private, nonprofit, community-based organization. It's one of 21 regional centers that serve communities throughout the state of California. The South Central Center ensures that individuals who are eligible to receive services are assisted in reaching their potential to the highest quality of life. They provide intake assessment, diagnosis, counseling, lifelong services, coordination, and will assist in obtaining needed services when eligible criteria is met. In July 2003, the center created a specialized service unit which is housed within the Consumer and Program Services Department. Established to respond to a variety of consumer needs, the unit is made up of a variety of components. The case management for judicially-involved consumers, a law enforcement liaison which houses the Twin Tower Correction Facility, the placement coordinator who assists case management in the unit, as well as case managers in the center, the center's Department of Children and Adult Services to identify placement for consumers and various clinical consultants who provide expertise in behavioral management, nursing consultation, and facilitation of support groups for the judicially-involved. The center also facilitates by --
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 20th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is approximately 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But before beginning with the official business appearing on today's agenda, we do have a couple of presentations. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President. Although it's raining in Los Angeles, it's raining goodness this morning in the chamber because we have some great leaders from Japan who are here with us today.
I'm a Japanese interpreter for the group of mission visiting Los Angeles Council Chamber today. And I would like to introduce Mr. Shinoka. He's the leader of this mission of the 35 councilmen from Japan.
And women.
Of course, I'm with the women, too.
This delegation is sent by the National Government of Japan to study local issues throughout the United States and Canada. And they chose Los Angeles to come and learn a little about what we do. And what is most important of what we do is we try to listen to the public. This is the public's microphone. The council's microphones are over there, but this is where the public comes to speak.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, October 20th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is approximately 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But before beginning with the official business appearing on today's agenda, we do have a couple of presentations. Let me begin by recognizing Councilmember Labange.
Good morning, Mr. President. Although it's raining in Los Angeles, it's raining goodness this morning in the chamber because we have some great leaders from Japan who are here with us today.
I'm a Japanese interpreter for the group of mission visiting Los Angeles Council Chamber today. And I would like to introduce Mr. Shinoka. He's the leader of this mission of the 35 councilmen from Japan.
And women.
Of course, I'm with the women, too.
This delegation is sent by the National Government of Japan to study local issues throughout the United States and Canada. And they chose Los Angeles to come and learn a little about what we do. And what is most important of what we do is we try to listen to the public. This is the public's microphone. The council's microphones are over there, but this is where the public comes to speak.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you so much. And now we hear from Taro Shuroko, the leader of the delegation of this great group. Please welcome him to the Los Angeles City Hall.
Good morning. We are the mission to study about how they run their council in the chamber in the United States as well as in Canada. And then now we are visiting Los Angeles Council today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
Thank you very much for welcoming us to observe the session today.
We are grateful to be able to observe the big day today for Los Angeles Council Chamber session. And we are going to learn during the sessions and take that study back to Japan. And each member of the councilmen and women will reflect upon their study that we observed here today. Thank you very much.
And also Hiroshi Shigaki is also a co-chair of the delegation. And at this time, I would like to ask all of you to rise and be welcomed by the Mayor, Mayor Han, by the President of the City Council, Alex Padilla, and all the city council. Please rise for your official welcome. Here, here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Arigato.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Crook, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan, Labange, Lado, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, the Vice-Sign Padilla, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Parks.
Today we have with us the South Central Los Angeles Regional Center. And the reason we're doing this today is they're going to be celebrating their 30th anniversary on Friday, the 22nd. And I'd like to ask Dr. Paul Amucci and Marilyn Cotry to come up and be part of this presentation. Many of you are aware the South Central Los Angeles -- come inside. That's it? Come on. Don't be frightened. That's it. The South Central Los Angeles Regional Center will celebrate its 30th anniversary Friday, October 22nd. They're celebrating the 30th year of educating, empowering, and advocating for individual diagnosis with developmental disabilities and their families. This center is a private, nonprofit, community-based organization. It's one of 21 regional centers that serve communities throughout the state of California. The South Central Center ensures that individuals who are eligible to receive services are assisted in reaching their potential to the highest quality of life. They provide intake assessment, diagnosis, counseling, lifelong services, coordination, and will assist in obtaining needed services when eligible criteria is met. In July 2003, the center created a specialized service unit which is housed within the Consumer and Program Services Department. Established to respond to a variety of consumer needs, the unit is made up of a variety of components. The case management for judicially-involved consumers, a law enforcement liaison which houses the Twin Tower Correction Facility, the placement coordinator who assists case management in the unit, as well as case managers in the center, the center's Department of Children and Adult Services to identify placement for consumers and various clinical consultants who provide expertise in behavioral management, nursing consultation, and facilitation of support groups for the judicially-involved. The center also facilitates by -- The center also facilitates bimonthly forensic assessment teams, which meet to assess the needs of those that are incarcerated. The team is also comprised of a physician, a behavioral psychologist, a forensic psychologist, a criminal justice specialist, case managers, and also a liaison. The South Central Center is responsible coordinating the multi-agency advisory board, which meets quarterly to deal with issues within the judiciary system. We're giving them a resolution to acknowledge their 30 years in operation, but really 30 years of dealing with some of the most critical problems in the South Los Angeles area, particularly the 8th District, in which we have unfortunately about 40% of those returning from state prison return to this region. And they are one of the first organizations that allows these young people that are coming back from the criminal justice system a way to be placed in the mainstream and hopefully move forward with their lives. I'd like to ask the doctor at this time to come up and make some comments.
Good morning. We are very glad to be here this morning to receive a proclamation from Mr. Parks. We are very grateful to him and to all of you. And thank you, Mr. Parks, for this recognition. Thank you very much.
I would also like to extend thanks and appreciation for this proclamation to the city and Bernard Parks and on behalf of Mr. Henderson, our executive director, as well as our Board of Directors, President Malcolm Bennett. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Labange, for a brief introduction.
We mentioned our dear friends from Japan who are here this morning. There are some great retired engineers from one of the greatest institutes in the world, two of them, JPL, the Jet Propulsion Laboratory, and Caltech. Would you please rise and be recognized, the retirees who are out visiting our City Hall? We certainly welcome them. These are the people. Yeah. Raise your hand if you helped put the man on the moon. Who's helped put the man on the moon? I know all those people on the JPL made a great contribution. How about to Mars? There's one in the backyard. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange, and the historian that you are, you also have to recognize your following in the footsteps of Einstein, who has a wonderful exhibit right now at the Skirball Center. But he spent some very pivotal days at Caltech during his professional career. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Perry and Mr. Labange.
Our very great guest is in the building and they're running to the finish line. So I think we should throw it back to you, as they say when they're out there reporting the news, but we're going to ask to come back in a moment.
Okay. We're experiencing some technical difficulties.
She's going through the security check.
Okay. Well, while we wait for her, let's go through the consent agenda, dispense with consent items. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Ms. Grul seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Vieragosa moves and Ms. Miskowski seconds.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item, please.
On the regular agenda items noted for public hearing, item number one, the applicant requests a continuance to December 15th.
Members, any objection to continuing item number one? Seeing none. That item is continued. Next item, please.
And item number two, Councilmember Parks is requesting that matter be continued to October 29th.
Members, any objection to continuing item number two? Seeing none. Also without objection. Next item.
On the regular agenda items which public hearings have been held, items three through 15. Items three and four are confirmations. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold three and four temporarily on the desk. Members, when we dispense with consent to items, we'll come back to the presentation, then items three and four, and then we'll take up the airport items out of order. So three and four held on the desk, leaving items five through 27. At this time, public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. And if there's no such motion, do we have any requests for specials?
Excuse me, Mr. President, just to let council know, on item number 15, the incorrect committee report was inadvertently placed on the agenda, although council does have copies of the correct committee report and council may adopt the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee report.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas moves the corrected committee report. Five through 15 still before us. Any specials? Any specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items which public hearings have not been held, items 16 through 27, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Members, 16 through 27 now before us. And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Specials, Ms. Grul.
Just a technical amendment on item number 23. It's a special event where we had the, seems like the wrong name. It should be Saint Jane Frances de Chantal.
Okay. With that correction, we'll consider that item as amended. Any specials? Members, any specials on 16 through 27? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 28 is a closed session item. Let's hold that on the desk. Next item, please.
On the next item is item 29, which is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And without objection, item 29 is for the city council today. I do not have speaker cards on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Members wishing to call item 29 special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on item 29. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 aye.
That is approved. Members, items 30 through 36 are LAX master plan related items. We'll hold those on the desk and take these up after confirming our commissioner and general manager. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to continue on with the presentations at this time?
Yeah, if that's the end of the regular agenda, let's now come back to presentations. And I see Ms. Perry is ready. Ms. Perry.
Okay, Mr. Labange, it's time for you to come back. Okay. Get in position. Mr. Labange and I have a very special individual we want to welcome today to our council chamber. This is Joanna Hayes, gold medal winner, 100 meter hurdle at the 2004 Olympics in Athens, Greece. Let's give her a very large round of applause. How about a standing ovation? Stand up for this person. Standing ovation, please. For Joanna Hayes, gold medal, 100 meter hurdle, 2004 Olympics, Athens, Greece, on August 24, 2004. She set a new Olympic record of 16 years standing. Standing with Joanna today is her father Ted and friends from Dome Village. Joanna has had a long career in track and field, beginning in her home as a toddler, running back and forth in the living room of her childhood home. Sprinting in impromptu races with her family to her teens, when she began distinguishing herself as a track and field athlete. She was active in track and field at JW North High School in Riverside, California. And in 1995, Joanna was named Gatorade Athlete of the Year. Joanna went on to UCLA to win back-to-back Pac-10 championships in the 400 meter hurdle in 1998 and 1999, missing the U.S. Olympic trials in 2000 by only 1/10 of a second. She has a history of overcoming injury, working through injuries and demonstrating an innate strength and athletic drive. In 1998, she came in eighth at the NCAA 100 meter hurdle despite running with a strained right hamstring that prevented her from competing in the 400 meter hurdles. She took two years off to recover from her hamstring injury and worked at the Jackie Joyner-Kersey Youth Center in East St. Louis. And in 2003, Joanna won the Pan American Games gold medal and other successes in the 400 meter hurdles. This year, Joanna earned the gold in Athens, Greece with an Olympic record-breaking time of 12 minutes, 46. 12, sorry. Whoa. That was really long. 12 minutes. Okay, I'm a little tired.
I'm 12.
All right, 12. No, Tom is 12 minutes. That was 12 seconds. 12 point 47.
37.
12 point 37. Thank you for correcting me. Seconds. The second fastest time of. Oh, sorry. That was the fastest time of her career. The fastest time. That's 12 point 37 seconds. Joanna achieved the ultimate honor in Athens, Greece with the support and love of her family, demonstrating a great drive and passion for her sport. And it is indeed an honor to congratulate this tremendous track and field athlete, Joanna Dove Hayes, on her gold medal victory in Athens, Greece, the 28th Olympiad. And I have to say that you are an inspiration to all of us and it was just tremendously moving to see you on TV, receiving your gold medal with such grace and elegance and speed. So let's give her another round of applause.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Joanna. I just wanted to say congratulations and you were one of the athletes that it was so fun to be following what you were doing in Athens. It was really exciting to read about you and you gave us great bragging rights. Certainly, we felt connected to you because we know your dad and really made the Olympics alive for particularly the girls here back in Los Angeles, who really were excited to follow your activities and we were so proud of you. You give us great bragging rights here in Los Angeles. So thank you. Congratulations. Girls rule.
Mr. President, members of the distinguished city council, this is a great American. This is a great American who represented us in Athens. This is a great American who worked every day of her life to reach her gold and set an Olympic record. And the one thing about sports is there's no talk. There's no microphones in sports. It's all walk the walk, run the run. She was the fastest woman in her sport in the whole wide world, which is a great honor. And what Janice just said about being connected, Southern California has more Olympic athletes, more Olympic athletes than anywhere in the world, in all of Southern California. And our great universities, the University of Southern California, as well as the University of California at Los Angeles, which is your great Bruin, truly develops great students and great athletes who led this country in this effort. I'm just so particularly proud of you because hurdles is something I always wanted to do and it takes real skill. Real skill. And you have 12 minutes, 12 seconds. But it takes real skill, but the dedication. And then, members, you know about elections and you know when you lose by a vote or two. She lost her opportunity in 2000 to represent us in Atlanta at the, excuse me, not in Atlanta, in Sydney. But she came right back. She didn't give up. And another four years later, and after the Olympic Games here in August, she went on to compete in Moscow and in Berlin and is always traveling where track and field is really respected and loved in Europe and other places. I wish we could get that back here, the Coliseum relays and other things that used to have in the past. But Joanna, I'm particularly proud of you because you did it and you represented our country so well. And I'm very proud of you too because you have a wonderful, wonderful husband, wonderful, wonderful father. I know, I made a mistake. See, you made one mistake, I made one mistake. Let me stop now before I make any more mistakes and let the great Olympic gold medal winner, Joanna Hayes, hurdles. Give her a big hand.
Good morning. I'll be quick. I've been speaking a lot this week, so I don't want to bore anybody. But I just wanted to say thank you very much for inviting me here today. And I am very proud and honored to have represented Los Angeles and, you know, the United States, but in particular, Los Angeles and Riverside from where I was raised over in Athens. Just to let you guys know a little bit about the environment there, it was just a wonderful experience for myself and for the members of the United States team. We were welcomed there with open arms into Athens and the people, they really loved us. They love the United States because we represent so much. We represent such a large amount of freedom and a lot of people would give anything to be able to live in the country in which we live. So just the look on their faces and the smiles that they gave as I rode taxis, walked down the streets, and especially when I entered that stadium was just, it was enough for me. I mean, the gold medal, it helped. It made it a little better, but just being there and seeing their faces was wonderful. And all the traveling that I get to do, that I'm so honored to be able to run in different countries and say I run for the United States. People just, they're just in complete awe of us over there. And I've worked very hard for a numerous amount of years, really my whole life, trying to get to the point that I was at on August 24th of 2004. It was almost indescribable, the feeling that I had crossing the line and seeing the Olympic record. And even more, when I received my medal, I was just so overcome with emotion and I was crying before they even, you know, before they said my name. When they got to the silver medalist, I started crying and like, it's almost your turn. And it was one of those moments where you've waited your whole life for it to happen, but then when you get that close, you don't want it to happen because then it will be over. And so I was like, okay, I guess I'll just, I'll wait, I'll wait. And then up there, I just, okay, don't stop playing the National Anthem, you know? Keep it going. We need the extended version. But it was wonderful and the meets after were wonderful. And for me, this has been my lifelong goal to win an Olympic medal and to be ranked number one in the world. And then the record, just to show that I was the best that ever competed in that event was just incredible. So I'm still excited. Every day I'm excited and people remind me every day that, you know, you did it. And I think for other people, it may even be more of a big deal than for me because for me, it became almost like a job every day, working, working, working. You get it. It's fabulous, but everyone else is like, you won, you won. It's incredible. And for me to see everybody smiling and so happy that I was able to do it, it's a complete honor for me. And as you all know, my dad is Ted Hayes and I know it's, you know, it's hard to tell me and him, you know? I'm just playing. My dad has been wonderful in my life and he's taught me so much. And I've, growing up, I've seen so much of Los Angeles, mostly visiting, spending some time, spending some nights, you know, living an hour away. But I've seen so much of Los Angeles and seen so much of what goes on, I feel like this really, really is my home. It will be my home for as long as I'm anywhere. I just, Los Angeles will be my home. And when I'm driving downtown, I see all the police officers and everybody. I think I know everyone. I think everyone knows me, but it's just great. And I'd like to just thank you all again for honoring me today, you know? Thank my father and the rest of my family and Dome Village for being so supportive over these long 27 years of my life. I just, I thank you all and I'm just very honored.
Good morning. I'm Joanna's father.
I get my looks from my mother.
Go to your room, Joanna. In the spirit of Olympics, which was supposed to be a time when all nations put down their politics and their differences and stopped warring and come together to celebrate the human form at its finest. And I've been before this council numerous occasions, often fussing with you. But this is wonderful to be able to walk into the city council today with my daughter, who has made this wonderful feat in her life. And she said, Dad, when I get that gold medal someday, I want to be able to help you, help with the homeless and help young people and so forth. And she's done that. And I'm proud, but mostly I'm thankful to God that he allowed Joanna to work hard, to be successful, and to come through and to be representative. And thank you all for such a warm, warm welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange?
Give another great round of applause for that Olympian, Joanna Hayes.
Question for you, Mr. Labange. Did you ask her? I want to know if you asked her how to take care of a bad hamstring.
Oh, don't run when you're over 50.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number three, and that's a personnel report recommending approval of Ms. approval of Ms. Barbara E. Miller to the Employee Relations Board.
As Ms. Miller comes forward, members, item number three is now before us. We do have a committee report recommending approval. Do we have members of the council wishing to ask questions of Ms. Miller at this time? Seeing none, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It will be an honor to serve.
Next item. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Next item is item number four, and that's a committee report and a communication from the EERC regarding confirmation, permanent GM for the ITA.
Okay. Ms. Bradshaw's coming forward. And again, members, we have a committee report recommending approval. Any questions from members at this time? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
You came in as an assistant in the department, Assistant General Manager. How long ago?
July 2002.
And time passes quickly. I know you have extensive experience in technology from Northern California, law enforcement technology. And I know that when you were second in command, you were very helpful to my office in getting things done. And also, your wonderful assistant, Roger, who's sitting over there, keeping his fingers crossed that you'll get this confirmation. I just want to compliment you on your service to the customer, which is the employees of the City of Los Angeles with what your department does to deliver that service. And we're in a whole new arena of technology that we didn't have years and years ago. And I want to commend you for what you've done prior to the mayor appointing you to this position, and give you my whole support. And I really appreciate Roger and your staff. That's really been very helpful to me, my office, my district office, when we've had issues that have come up regarding information technology. And I held the chairmanship of that committee for a period of time, and I know there were some troubles with a lot of different areas. And I think that you've come in as a refreshing change to break through some of the red tape bureaucracy and make the department very responsive to the needs of the city employees, which benefits the people of the City of Los Angeles. So I commend you on that, to keep up the good work. And Roger, you keep working hard, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. I certainly rise in support of this position for you. I really believe your entire background has really culminated in, in this position for you. I, I think you're exactly the right person for this. I was just going to ask you about two things to have, hear you comment on. One, as you know, there is a motion going forward that would kind of reinstate the filming of some of the commission meetings. I know particularly in the Harbor area, we used to do that, and then it quit abruptly. Just didn't know if you were kind of following that, and wanted to hear your comments on, on how that would work. For instance, the Harbor Commission meeting, I know, is the same time as the City Council meeting. Didn't know if we could have those live, or if you gave any thought to that. And the other thing was, there are a lot of neighborhood councils who are beginning to explore the possibility of even having their meetings possibly in an interactive state on the internet, so that neighborhood council members who can't go to the meetings could log on at home and maybe see what's going on with the neighborhood council. We didn't know. You have some comments on both those things. I really think that is the future for Los Angeles, both those ideas, and wonder what you thought about that.
Absolutely. You're right on target. This is a technology world, and Los Angeles has tremendous assets in our both education and government stations, to be able to bring live your meetings, committee meetings, as well as commission hearings. So we are totally enthusiastic in support. When there are duplicate meetings at the same time, you can't broadcast two live unless you have additional channels. One of the things that is before the City Council is a needs assessment report, and one of the parts in that report is about public education and government access and additional channels. So there's some opportunities as we embark upon new franchises in the cable-related areas to expanding that for more live coverage, more government access channels, as well as more education access channels. I appreciate your, your question on the internet as well. We're all sort of self-directed today, and that internet, my family is actually watching in Oregon and Washington via the Cablecast internet, because they couldn't be here in Los Angeles for this confirmation hearing. So, hi Dave, Kim, Tina, and Krista. So we have a lot of opportunities on the internet to even be more self-directed and serve a purpose for the neighborhood councils, of which we're working very closely with.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to also give you my support. This is one of those jobs that if you don't, if we don't hear from you, it means it's a good thing. That means everything is moving smoothly. It means that the infrastructure's in place. And I got to share with you that Roger's been a very strong supporter of your department, and is always lending his advice and concern. He's making sure that we understand what is moving. As you know, technology tends to change every six months almost. Just to keep up with these kinds of improvements is a task in of itself. But I've got new screens in my office, be more efficient communicating with our constituents, being able to get back to the issues. I think that's really the bottom line, is how we best serve our city. So I want to thank you for your hard work, and looking forward to work with you in the future.
Thank you very much. No one person does it all. I'm tremendously proud. Several people have mentioned Roger Fernandez. I'm proud to be his colleague. We've got a whole team of over 800 great IT professionals that works on your behalf in the city. And we are extremely proud to be a part of the city family as a whole, and very much appreciate the kind comments, your continued support and encouragement and enthusiasm for our passion for excellence.
Mr. Duttlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of the nomination. I did want to take the opportunity just to make a couple of plugs for things that I think are important. One is that as you take on this new role, I think, and I know that Councilmember Weiss has been working on a number of these issues as well, but if we could look at the, some of the systems that are actually working outside of the City of LA, for instance, the field offices in the state legislature are on a program called Monarch, which I'm sure you're aware of. Amazing advantages to being able to connect with constituents, ability to do so many different things that we're unable to do with the existing contact management system. And I know that my, my district staff is out there cheering right now, because this is something that they, they struggle with every day. Our inability to even use access as a database is very, very limiting. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, to make some of those changes. And then the last is, as you know, I introduced a motion on surplus properties here, and Councilmember Weiss and I have been working on trying to get that information that General Services has put together, and get that actually listed on the city's website, so that whether you're a nonprofit housing developer, or you're a local neighborhood association, you can go onto the city's website and identify who's guilty of that slumlordism right there. And you'll find that it's the City of Los Angeles. Or, on the other hand, if you're interested in trying to do some mixed-use development or something, that you'll be able to very quickly access the hundreds of properties, if not thousands of properties that the City of LA has. So those are a couple of things that I hope. And then it'll be great to stay current with Windows, whatever, as it continues to move. But I guess I should ask, can, can we get your commitment to, to really dig in and move this city into the 21st century relative to technology on some of those issues?
I very much look forward to that challenge. This council has instituted some great policy to make government more accessible to our communities and to our citizens, including through 3-1-1. And all of those opportunities that you mentioned will really transform how we do business in this city and get beyond the paper into the technology and into the 21st century. And I look forward to doing that with your support.
Well, and I think, Mr. President, when we vote on this one, we should actually be forced to push the button. So anyway, we'll have a technologically advanced vote on this one. Congratulations and best luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith.
Well, the bad news there is that the ISP is down, your family's not watching. Just kidding. You know, I, I want to say, first of all, I'm very pleased to join with my colleagues in your support of your nomination and selection as General Manager. When the four of us who were just elected came to office just a year ago now, your staff was there working with us, making sure the computers were on the staff's desk, that on July 1st, when we got sworn in, they were all on the line, and the systems worked, and everybody was ready to go to work. And that was a major accomplishment for all of us, and we thank you for that. More importantly, you've been in this council every day, whenever you needed help, you're here to help us. New ideas are coming forth in great volume, but you're there to work with us. I had a proposal in, which your staff worked very vigilantly on, and that was creating a, a video conferencing system for our remote community, so they can participate in the democracy we have without having to drive to City Hall. And it was very refreshing that your staff came in and said, not only can we do it, it's better than we thought, it worked better than we thought, and it's not going to cost as much as we thought. And any General Manager that comes in here and says, it's not going to cost as much as we thought, is a big hero to all of us. So congratulations on that. Thank you for your leadership so far, and I'm looking for great things to come out of ITA in the years to come. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for those words. And I rise in strong support here of your nomination as General Manager, and have enjoyed working with you in these past years. And, and don't worry, Mr. Duttlo, about Windows. I'm sure we'll be on, on Linux anytime soon, just like, like Brazil. There's some cost savings there probably, but give us some time. In the meantime, I just wanted to underscore that I really, what I said in committee, which is I believe that some of the largest cost savings we have in the city are around IT, that generally, we've tightened our belts for the last three years in the city. Wall Street has recognized that we have done so. We haven't overspent our budget, but we've really asked more out of all of our people across ITA and other departments as well, and maintained a bond rating, maintained fiscal strength because of, of good work around this horseshoe, our CIO, CLA, and the departments themselves. We do, though, I think, next, have an area to look at where we still are not an enterprise, we don't really take an enterprise approach to IT, where I know that you philosophically do, and yet taking that philosophy and beginning to implement it is immensely difficult. You're not empowered as a city CIO in the truest sense of having authority over individual departments. And we can understand departments being proprietary over what works for them right now, and very scared of the idea of centralization and scared of the idea of an enterprise. And, and who can blame them based on the past? The challenge is going to be to show departments how consolidation of IT can serve everybody, and it, this day and age, ultimately result in more services for our constituents, because if we can have those cost savings, that means more out there on the street. And I appreciate your staff and how much they are trying to keep up with the technology that is out there in an increasingly difficult way, and, or time, rather. And the last thing is really democratizing our information technology. Information is the lifeblood of democracy, and that flow between us and the people that we are entrusted with representing is critical. And we still, we, we have a great first step early notification system, 3-1-1, but it's, it overwhelms you if you're the average consumer of democracy. And a way that we can really target that, so that if I'm a person who's living in Lakeview Terrace and interested in land use issues and environmental issues, somehow what's going on here gets to me. We have that technology. We have to do a better job with our departments of designing how that democratic process is facilitated by information technology. And so I put those two challenges before you again.
Thank you for the challenges. My mother once told me, all challenges are really just opportunities, so I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Labange.
Congratulations on Mayor Han's selection. And tell me, how's Liza Laurie doing?
She is in her path to recovery and doing very well. And she still faces a long road ahead of her, but certainly I will send your regards.
Oh, please do, with all the regards to the City Council.
I will.
That unfortunate health challenge that, that a part of her career, now this is your challenge now in this job. One thing I'm going to ask in the spring, when we look at technology, is a grade. You know how we grade our restaurants in this county, A, B, C, and D, and F? I want to see how our departments are doing. I know some in Public Works are absolutely, from talking to citizens, phenomenal as far as putting information on about projects and things in the neighborhood. And I just hope we can develop some, not to be self-critical, but sometimes you're critical yourself, you can improve yourself. And we all know the great adage that Ms. Han spoke of, after I spoke of, but she spoke of it first, information is knowledge's power. And that's the whole trick. And what Mr. Garcetti just spoke about is so true, because more people are. Last night at a meeting in a community, someone made a complaint in that the information for land use decisions, which they used to, the Neighborhood Association, used to give a bunch of envelopes to the city clerk, or city clerks would then send out the information through the planning department. Now it's all online, which isn't bad, except it's online all the way from San Pedro to Chatsworth, and from Venice to Brook, to Boyle Heights. And they wanted to see if it could be defined or broken down more into a region of their city, because there's so much information that it could overwhelm. You've got to know how to find the information. So that's something I will ask you to see if it can be developed, if you could break it down, so it could be easier, easier to digest, I guess is the right term. Thank you and your staff. Your staff does a great job, and keep pushing. What are some of your goals? I've got another 47 seconds. So tell me what you really want to see next year at this time.
What I'd really like to see, we were just rated in an annual survey, the fourth annual survey, looking at e-government and in communities across America. And I am very proud to report, Los Angeles in this last year has risen from number 36 in the country to number five in the country. So my goal is to, Denver is number one, New York is number two. New York patterned their 3-1-1 system after the City of Los Angeles. They've had more resources, which is why I believe they're number two. So my, I'm shooting for higher than number five in this next year. To rise literally from 36 to five in one year is a big accomplishment for the city. But we can always improve, we can always do more. That's what I'm going to be looking for, and challenging our workforce to think out of the box and really look at the business needs of the city driving the IT, rather than IT driving the business needs of the city.
Thank you very much. I like what you just said. Push ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. Thank you for those remarks. We had a very productive hearing in committee. There are a number of issue areas relating to this department that I have been keeping a close watch on for the last several months and intend to continue to keep a close watch on. Ms. Bradshaw knows about those issues. Look forward to continuing to hear from her regularly on all of them. And I wish you the very best luck in your service, in your new, officially in your new capacity. You've been essentially serving in this capacity for some time now. Thank you, Mr. President. Move approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss.
If there's nobody else wishing to speak at this time, let's open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege, and thanks to all of you for your encouragement, support, and for our future together in the 21st century.
Absolutely. We look forward to working with you. Forthwith, please, on item number four. And Madam Clerk, I believe that brings us to items 30 through 36. Once again, these items are relative to LAX. Before these items, Mr. Parks.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to see if we can reconsider number two. We made a mistake. It should be continued to the 22nd versus the 29th.
Okay, let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item two is reconsidered, and again, without objection, continued to October 22nd, not the 28th, or the 29th, but the 22nd. Okay, let's try this one more time. 30 through 36, LAX-related matters. We took public comment on these again yesterday, and we have scheduled for today to be council discussion, deliberation, and a vote. The staff is back. You guys might as well just come forward, because it's only a matter of time before you get some questions here. So as you're setting up, members, let's, if I can ask for your attention, going to begin with recognizing Councilmember Reyes as the Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, for his summary of what has transpired in that committee's considerations of this matter. We'll then hear from Councilmember Tony Gardenas, who's the Chair of the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee, to give us an update as to what transpired in that committee's deliberations. And then we will hear from Councilmember Missakowski, in whose district the airport is located, and then is located and then the balance of the council members as you press your buttons. That sound like a plan? Sounds like a plan. I also want to call your attention to a number of amending motions that have been introduced a couple yesterday and I've seen already at least two today. So buckle your seatbelts. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Before I may speak, present the Plumb Committee Report and the committee's recommendation on the LAX master plan. Yesterday, I was unable to attend the council meeting. However, would like to state for the record that I have listened to a tape of yesterday's public hearing. So I have heard all the comments made by the public, both in support and opposition of this plan. I want to state upfront that today's vote is really an initial vote proposing to overrule the LA County's Airport Land Use Commission's determination that the LAX master plan is inconsistent with the county's airport plan. We are required to have a period of time before council can take a final action. This will allow time for the FAA to review and respond before the council's final vote. Therefore, the entire matter will come back to the full council on December 7th for a final vote. Again, today's vote simply proposes that we overrule the county's airport commission. The Plumb Committee held an extensive public hearings and yesterday, the council again heard comments and different perspectives. As you all know, this plan is more than 10 years in the makings, so it didn't happen overnight. I'd like to ask our city attorney, who's been working on the land use matters, to come to the table. And colleagues, many of the issues that were raised throughout the committee process, throughout the commission process, and indeed as a result of yesterday's hearing, became clear to me that the role and the purpose of the specific plan seems to be a little blurred. I'm not sure if we really understand what the specific plan means in regards to how we implement policy, how we fold in the RAND study, how we fold in the transportation issues, how we fold in the local issues. The specific plan allows for that type of input. The overall components of this master plan is just that, there are many different elements in a very comprehensive process. What Councilmember Miss Sikowski has proposed in coordination with the mayor's office is a step-by-step, very methodical process that folds in the necessary time for each community stakeholder, each council member, each county supervisor, each senator, each assembly member to have their input as to the impact of change that's being proposed by the plan. So I'd just like our city attorney to just give us an overview of what the specific plan means in this context because from a land use point of view, the essence of our discretion and local control lies in those details. So I would like for the city attorney to illustrate that because many of the questions you may have, and those of you that are not listening, probably have those questions anyway, are essentially being addressed through this process. Please.
Thank you. Claudia calling city attorney's office. The specific plan provides for council participation in a matter that would normally just be within the jurisdiction of the Board of Airport Commissioners, BoAC. This allows for any, this prohibits any grading permit, building permit, or use of land permit or any construction to occur for any project.
I should pull it closer. Counterintuitive.
Counterintuitive. Okay, well, we'll talk about counterintuitive things today, too. Without an approval of a LAX plan compliance. So we've worked out in this plan a procedure to bring everything to the city council. The first thing that will happen is the executive director will take a look at any project, and I'm talking about any project. I know you're thinking yellow light, green light, any project. Will come to the executive director and the executive director will take a look at traffic studies, annual traffic studies that are going to be done, aviation activity analysis that's going to be done. And they will also be working with what's called the LAX Master Plan Stakeholder Liaison, someone who is going to be working with the community and all the stakeholders, airlines, airline groups, and neighborhood councils, everyone. So the executive director will take a look at all of that information and decide whether this project can go forward. Before the executive director can make, prepare a report for her board about that, she needs to make findings. She needs to make findings that it's consistent with the LAX plan, that it's consistent with the specific plan, and that all the environmental requirements have been prepared for that document. That means before any project goes forward, she pretty much has to have a lot of that work done already because she can't make the findings unless we're that far along. In her report, she will have, before her, she will have a written description of the project, the completed, at least, initial environmental study, the traffic analysis and the aviation activity, and she will look at what the stakeholder liaison has brought to her. Before she can make that recommendation to BoAC, she needs to make sure that all the applicable master plan commitments and mitigation measures, the applicable traffic improvements and right-of-way dedications and any other conditions that are appropriate have been attached to the project. And she will summarize all of the information she's gotten from other departments and from the stakeholder liaison and bring that to BoAC. And BoAC will, for all projects, have a notice and a public hearing, will make the same kinds of determinations with written findings and make that recommendation to the city council. They can approve the project, they can modify the project, they can approve it with conditions or they can deny it. If they approve it or in some way send it forward, it will come to the city council and the city council will look at the same things for all projects and they'll make their determination about whether there's an adequate environmental review, whether the aviation activity report or the traffic activity report shows that there's something they need to be concerned about. They will also ensure that any appropriate master plan commitments or mitigation measures are attached to the project and they can approve, approve with conditions, modify or deny one of these LAX plan compliance requests. Now, that's for all projects, yellow light, green light, anything. For yellow light projects, there is a more rigorous procedure that needs to be followed and that is that when it comes to the city council, or I mean, I'm sorry, that before even the executive director goes forward on it, they have to have, she has to have developed and put into place a full, what we're calling an amendment study. And this amendment study will look at, I think the way we've described it is a good way to look at it because it is so comprehensive. It will, Lawa has to initiate a complete specific plan amendment study comprehensively addressing security, traffic, aviation activity, and the corresponding environmental analysis that would be consistent with CEQA. And that's for these projects. The GTC, the Ground Transportation Center, the Automated People Mover from the GTC to the Central Terminal Area, the CTA, demolition of the CTA terminals 1, 2, and 3, the West Satellite Concourse and any associated people mover segments, the North Runway Reconfiguration and including the Center Taxway, and any onsite road improvements associated with the GTC and the AP, the Automated People Mover segment from the Ground Transportation Center to the Central Terminal Area. And if any one of those projects want to come forward, that full study has to be done. We look at the entire specific plan again and pretty much we have to look at the master plan as well. The other thing that triggers that full study is if in one of the annual traffic generation reports, the annual traffic, I'm sorry, if in any one of the annual traffic generation reports, it shows that the net new airport peak hour trips exceed 8,236 for that year or will exceed it for that year, that will also trigger a full study. The third thing that will trigger a full study is if the annual aviation activity analysis forecasts that the annual passengers for that year are anticipated to exceed 78.9 million. So the plan, the master plan, as you've heard before, was designed to handle a capacity of 78.9. So that's one of the reasons that's a trigger. One of the reasons that the traffic is a trigger is because that's the number of trips, that net new trips that were anticipated in, as an underlying basis for all of the traffic studies. So that's a general idea of what will happen as the projects come through. Each project will have to come to council. Council can, for the green light projects, choose not to act and in that case, the BoAC, the Board of Airport Commissioners, action will stand. They have 30 days to determine that. That's only for the green light projects, but everything comes to the city council.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. One of the challenges that I see us going through as a body is that many of our specific plans were passed before many of us became council members. And so the tweaking, the potential, the flexibility, the accountability that a specific plan brings to the table is built into the process. So as I heard the various statements being made yesterday in terms of this is really just an overall expansion plan, that we don't need any more strategy because we have to think regionally. This plan does not preclude us looking at the regional issues. What this does is creates the checks and balances of each phase of the project that speaks to modernizing our airport, that speaks to bringing federal funds, that we need to upgrade this aging facility, which are the reasons why I'm supporting this plan. It's obvious we need to stimulate this economic engine for both our regional and international economy. We're looking at environmental quality issues and the specific plan breaks down each environmental issue as we go through the process, step by step, within a flexible framework. And we're looking at how we enhance our safety, enhance security on an incremental basis as we look at real-time numbers and impacts, as we improve our technology and our sophistication in security. This plan allows for that type of development. So council colleagues, let's ask the hard questions, but let's try to avoid the three ring circus of a political race that takes away from our ability to do something for the city, our ability to enhance this region and to focus on the issues for what it is because we are running out of time. Thank you.
Mr. Gardeinas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for all of your diligent work and hard work as chairman of the Plumb Committee. I also sit on that committee, I'm very proud of the work that you did because you did keep the focus on the issues and the policy and there was no politics coming from the dais in that room and I want to thank you for that. I'd also like to thank my colleagues on the Commerce Committee, Cindy Miss Sikowski and Councilmember Janice Han for also working in that vein as well. This is not about politics, this is about policy. So let's get to the policy. First of all, I'd like to point out that in our committee, the Commerce Committee, we had a four-plus hour hearing and we asked four and a half, okay, Ms. Han reminded me, it was four and a half hours. And we asked very poignant questions and very, very difficult questions and also some of those questions were answered. Every single question was answered and some details will be coming forth as we've already announced that we will have further committee hearings on those details over the coming weeks. Also want to also say that we're making it as apparent and transparent to the public as possible. We televised this hearing. Here we are talking about a proprietary organization and we televised the hearing in case any of my colleagues are encouraging that across the board for our proprietary organizations. And we want to make sure that the public is present, we want to make sure that the public has access to all of this information and we're making it as accessible as possible. I'm not going to repeat the entire four and a half hours, but I would like to have you clarify and thank you for already clarifying my first question about the green light and yellow light projects. There's nothing in this plan that allows anyone to behind the scenes move a project forward. It requires formal process, it requires that all of the EIRs and future mitigations be done and also votes of the council as well. So thank you for clarifying that. In addition to that, I'd like to ask if there's a representative of the community coalition present? I'd like to make sure that we get a status on how that negotiation is coming along. If you can come forward to the table, please. Thank you very much. One of the things I'd like to ask, like I said, I don't want to repeat the entire details of the four and a half hour hearing, but we did cover, in fact, and also make it clear to Lawa that they are to continue to negotiate in good faith with the Community Benefits Plan. How is that coming along? Is there progress still being made? Are we bringing closure to items that were actually open a few weeks ago?
Councilman, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Daniel Tabor, for the record. We've made progress even since the hearing. We think we're down to just a few issues, one being the actual funding amounts and the structure of the program for the job training, the other being the items relative to the two school districts. We had a meeting just last week with the school districts in Lawa. We think it was a very successful meeting, able to identify specific items that need further discussion. Our plan is, and I have not talked with the Lawa representatives yet, but the school district representative from Linux is here, the superintendent, planning to meet next Thursday in a final, what we hope will be one of the final sessions on school district issues and see if we can get those resolved, but we're confident that within the next two to three weeks, we should have resolution of those issues.
Excellent. In the next 30 days, we are going to be having you come forward and also Lawa come forward to the Commerce Committee as well to bring us up to date and hopefully you will have brought closure to all of the items by then, hopefully.
It's our hope.
So thank you very much for all of your hard work and your diligence. We really appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that you are still at the table and that nobody's taking anyone for granted here.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Not at all. Thank you.
In addition to that, I would like to ask Lawa if you could please clarify for edification of the public, local hiring is a big issue and it's very important here. What are we doing in the Public Benefits Plan? What is Lawa doing to make sure that the contractors, the developers on this project are actually going to do some local hiring and what kind of resources are you providing for them?
There are two parts of our job program. One has to do with construction job and jobs and the other is the non-construction jobs. With regard to construction, each contractor is going to require to meet a goal with regard to hiring from the existing apprentice programs that the unions currently utilize. With regard to the non-construction jobs, we are going to fund CDD, who will oversee a jobs program using a WIB. There will be a local work source center and through that, they will do screening and training and there will also be a first source hiring program that's utilized there.
Okay. And once again, I just want to remind you that we do expect that Lawa will bring a full report on the progress on that and also on the tightening of the language of how to make sure that we hold accountable the businesses who will be hiring and making sure that they follow through with that commitment that we all have, but we need to make sure that it goes all the way down the line as well. In addition to that, when it comes to the job training, an amount of $1 million was thrown out. Obviously, that's substantial money and I'd like to make sure that you go ahead and work with that and make it as flexible as possible, perhaps something that's tied to the amount of projects that actually come to fruition through the progress of the entire project. I have one more question for you and that is, when it comes to the financing of the project, this is potentially billions of dollars. Even if you just talk about the green light projects, it's $3.1 billion at least. And then with the rest, it could be as much as $11 to $12 billion. Now with that, what is Lawa's bond rating? And secondly, how much of the city coffers will, the general fund from the city of Los Angeles, how much sales tax across the city will be increased and how much property tax across the city will be increased?
Well, let me start by saying there will be no property tax money involved in this. There will be no city funds involved in this. The airport, in fact, the last money the airport took from the city of Los Angeles was in 1920 when Minesfield was bought and converted to the airport. We have been fully independent since that time. We have a double A bond rating from Standard and Poor's. It's the highest bond rating of any airport in the country. We are financially stable and we will be using a mixture of our revenues, federal grants, the rents we get off the airlines and the concessionaires and landing fees to fund the entire program.
So potentially, there's FAA grants, PFC charge, which is already is a maximum of $4.50, possible increase in rental rates on the facility, hopefully as it's being $4.50, possible increase in rental rates on the facility, hopefully as it's being upgraded.
Right.
Those, it'll, it'll be commensurate with that. Landing fees as well, which is done like on a per-pound basis, some
That's correct.
sort of factor. In addition to that, also car rentals.
That's right.
There's also a car rental facility that's involved here, something that would be very modern and very centralized. So all of those are the litany of opportunities that you have of raising revenue.
That's correct.
For, for the purposes of, of the public understanding how large this airport is when it comes to the activities, approximately, what's the revenue that actually comes through Lawa on an annual basis? Is it 100 million, 500 million, a billion a year?
I'm going to ask our CFO to come up here a second.
According to my notes, it's, it might be just shy of half a billion, about $500 million.
It's about 450 this year.
About 450?
This year.
Also, my last question is this. The, you said that you're independent of the City of Los Angeles, the general fund coffers, you're not talking about increasing somebody's property taxes here. What happens if, for some reason, the bonds go south or what have you? Are you going to come to the council? Are you going to come to the mayor? Are you going to come to the people of the City of Los Angeles and say, bail us out? Can you?
Actually, we're very clear on our official statements, and I think in the, in the Commerce and Energy Natural Resources Committee, we actually read you the language that we print that says these are not obligations of the City of Los Angeles or its general fund. And so when a bondholder buys one of our bonds, they know that those bonds are only secured by airport revenue. No property taxes, no sales taxes, no other general fund revenues support those obligations. So if there is a default, it is a default, and it stops with the airports, the airport's responsibility to make those bondholders whole or not pay.
So some millionaire individuals or some large organizations who might be buying these bonds on the other end, that's their risk?
That's correct.
Not the city constituents of the City of Los Angeles?
That's correct.
Or the city coffers?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members, for the attention you gave to this both yesterday and today. I think you heard Mr. Reyes say what this is. We are looking at a master plan, which is a framework, but more importantly, I think more importantly, we are really looking at a process. And then I'm going to tell you just a little bit of how this evolved. I saw the first draft of the specific plan for the master plan in early, early spring, late winter. And essentially, that specific plan that came out of another generation of airport personnel said, after the city council approves the master plan, the city council should get out of the way and let BOAC develop the projects. That's essentially, bottom line, how that specific plan read. And members, I said, that's not acceptable. I know specific plans. Mr. Reyes talked about what the specific plan is. It is the tightest planning control document or tool that we have in this city, or in any city, to really control the pace, the measure, the findings, the ability as to what and how something goes forward that has been set in a framework. And I said, that specific plan that was put forward as the first draft isn't good enough. I have probably more specific plans in Council District 11 than any other council district. And some council members say, that's not fair. We want specific plans because we know how good they are. We know what a good tool they can be. This particular tool here, you've heard the city attorney say, today, no master plan, no specific plan. If the council wants to influence any policy at LAX, we have to by the charter, assert Rule 245, take 10 votes, and either say yea or nay. That's all. What have we done in the specific plan? We've put in place a planning document that every policy decision on this, every project decision on this master plan, coming through the specific plan process, has to come to the city council for approval. The, the green light of projects, that's interesting, you'll look, this is the specific plan, not a big document. You won't find the word green light or yellow light in here. You will find planning codification of some projects that can go forward per the description the city attorney described. Then you read, and you get to the point where it says, where projects can't come forward, until, until Lawa shall initiate a complete LAX specific plan amendment study comprehensively addressing security, traffic, aviation activity, and corresponding environmental analysis consistent with CECL. They must do that for any project that's listed here, which are the yellow light projects. They must do that comprehensive study if any traffic growth goes over what it's forecast, because we know that that's a real trigger. And if the annual aviation activity looks like it will approach 78.9 map, we heard yesterday people say it's not a real cap, it's not a real trigger. If we start getting close to it, we've got to do a whole new comprehensive study. What are we doing in the meantime? We had yesterday, people say, we should do regionalization. Members, one of the things on your list of things today is something called the LAX Plan, which is a little bit more global. It's not the master plan, but it's something else. In that plan that we are adopting, it says, the goal of this plan and the goal of LAX in adopting a master plan is to redirect regional airport traffic from the local roadway system, including working in partnership with other government agencies at the state and federal agencies, to improve the connectivity, not only to LAX, but to all other airports. We got, by way of this plan, by way of what we're talking about in this plan, FAA, within the last two weeks, has said, yes, Lawa, you can use Lawa-generated money to go and build seven regional flyaways throughout the whole global network. When Lawa controls those flyaways, that's less traffic coming into LAX. But you know what else it is? It's a regional ground transportation network that can take people at those flyaways regionally to any other airport that we think is better suited. This regional plan, and this specific plan says, Lawa, it's not good enough that you tell us what your growth is every year. You tell us what the growth is. What is the map occurring at Burbank, occurring at John Wayne, occurring at Ontario, occurring at Palmdale? I did tease my colleague, Tony Cardenas, and asked if he wanted to take some map growth at Van Nuys, but that isn't in the picture. These documents create regional structure and create specific control. What I said yesterday to some of these other who testified, LAX cannot regionally solve this area by itself. And whether it was the county spokesman, or other state leader spokesman, or federal leader spokesman, saying, you must do better, I say to them, you must do better. We, how did we get MTA? City of LA didn't create MTA. The state created MTA for us and mandated every county, every city to be a partner to get regional transit done. That's what we need from Sacramento or the federal government to get regional transportation done here. We should be a partner, we should support it, but we have gone farther than anyone else has. We are doing the master plans at all of our other airports. We are ready for that regional plan, or for the county's Airport Land Use Commission plan, to come in and say what we really should be in a region. Members, we can't stop now. Everyone, everyone said the green light projects are good. Unless we adopt the master plan, we can't do the green light projects. We can, we have the study, we have the determination to look ahead. Do we need a mid-course correction on the other projects? But we need to do this now. One other reason we need to do it now, you heard from the community benefit participants saying how important what they're going to get is to really benefit those most impacted communities. Unless we adopt the master plan, no money from Lawa can flow to those communities. You heard the Lenox School District talk about how they got money years ago, and what did they do with it? They stuckled the windows on the school. Unless we approve a master plan and can allow FAA's approval to say, Lawa, start putting, getting a whole new generation of money into the Lenox School District to fix those schools in a more modern way, to benefit the jobs. And the jobs we're going to benefit upfront are the green light projects. Let's get those going. Allow us to look at this, get the reanalysis done, add a mid-course correction, or sooner if the growth is happening faster. But this allows it to be done. And members, what this really does is give the responsibility to each and every one of you, and each and every one of the people who will be sitting in a council seat in years to come, and the mayor's seat in years to come, the responsibility to look at this, affirm the projects, and control what the LA master plan shall be. We have a framework, we have a process, we have the tool, we have the implementation, we need the jobs today. This is not a rubber stamp. It is, council be responsible. Let's do something. It's overdue. And I didn't mention security, but I will on my next time I push my button.
Okay. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think there's somebody here from the airport who can speak to air quality issues. I'm not sure who. Okay. Person's here at the table?
Tony Skidmore.
Okay.
And John Pearson from Camp Dresser McKee.
There are a lot of parallels between this situation and what we're going through at the port in terms of increasing, increasing our activity and types of vehicles that bring cargo in and then trips. And so I want to know, based on your understanding, that the city has a no-net increase policy at the airport, including all associated emissions for the South Coast Stairbase, and how do you apply that policy? Or can you draw a parallel between that situation and this situation here? Because I know that we are expected to increase emissions, and what are the mitigation strategies that are going to be put in place? Hold my time.
Thank you, council members. Tony Skidmore with CDM. The way that Lawa is going to achieve the no-net increase, or actually better than that, is through alternative D. Through the various measures both incorporated in the plan and the mitigation measures, the plan in 2015 would actually achieve a reduction, a substantial reduction in total emissions at the airport, on the order of about 25,000 tons per year reduction compared to estimated emissions for 2004. The way that's accomplished is through, again, the plan design through improvements on the airfield that allow or enable aircraft to operate more efficiently, get them from the runway to the gate more efficiently, so that not taxiing and idling, that reduces, or that taxi idle time creates quite a bit in the way of emissions. The airfield improvements would reduce that. Also, gate electrification by enabling the aircraft, once they reach the gate, to plug into the city's power and turn off their onboard generators, that reduces emissions.
Yes, Mr. Levans likes that. Okay.
The ground surface equipment, changing those, all the tugs you see on the ground as you're in the aircraft, changing those to alternative fuels, that results in substantial air quality benefits. And then moving to the roadside, the transportation system improvements, both in terms of on-airport, relieving the congestion will reduce air quality impacts. And also, the off-airport improvements will improve circulation, which will reduce emissions. So all told, that in 2015 would reduce emissions over and above what we have today.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. What actions do you intend to take to encourage the cleanest type of aircraft at LAX in the context of the expansion? Hold my time.
Okay. With deregulation, an airport operator cannot regulate the aircraft in terms of requiring clean aircraft to come in. The aircraft emissions are set through, it's called ICAO, the International Civil Aviation Organization. But, and, and an operator can't regulate the engines, but what Lawa can do is what I described earlier, they can modify the operational characteristics of those aircraft. So be it clean aircraft that come to the airport, or the older aircraft, by improving their operations, that's the best way that Lawa has control to reduce the emissions of aircraft.
Is there any legislative options that we might have as a city to encourage the federal authorities to route the cleanest aircraft to LAX? Hold my time.
Certainly, Lawa has participated in a number of organizations that have that ability. The
AAA?
There's various organizations, I think, that by encouraging the federal government, FAA, and those organizations, they can set forth those requirements, but Lawa itself cannot.
We, we're currently working with a number of organizations, and we certainly would appreciate this body's support of that effort.
Well, just let me say for the record, I'd like to work with Ms. Misakowski and the mayor's office on trying to derive a federal solution based on whatever consensus we can build through this working group. Next question is on fugitive dust during the construction period. What's your mitigation plan for that? Hold my time.
There are a number of measures included in the master plan to cover all construction activities, measures ranging from applying soil stabilizers to graded area, disturbed areas, covering the ground surfaces after construction is finished, completing all roadways, driveways, sidewalks as soon as possible after grading, paving all construction access
Hold my time. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Paving construction access roads to reduce the, the dust, also having a, a person onsite to deal with dust complaints. If they see dust, or if they get complaints, that they can force the contractor to take measures to reduce that dust, fugitive dust.
And what, what do you anticipate to be the way to compel the contractor to do that?
Through contract requirements, fines, or being out of compliance with their contract if they do not adhere to the direction of the
Do you have any proactive strategies, instead of waiting for somebody to do something?
Well, I'm sorry, the, the measures that I indicated before, the construction plans will require the, the covering of graded areas, soil stabilization, so those measures are already in the contract.
All right. Now, I wanted to ask you about truck idling, particularly diesel truck idling during various construction phases, and what's your mitigation plan for that? Hold my time.
The, the plan includes a requirement that construction equipment cannot idle more than 10 minutes, as diesel or gas. If they're idling more than 10 minutes, they will be in violation of the requirement.
And what's your monitoring process for that? Because there will be trucks everywhere.
There will be onsite construction monitors that will be, at the areas that are the most active, that's where the construction monitor will be, but they have the ability to move to any construction site and checking the, the contracts. When they get there, they can time it, there, there's a number of ways that they can be onsite. And usually, they, the construction monitor will know the contractors over time, they, they know where to check and how to check, and what activities require that kind of monitoring.
And as part of our mitigation plan, we're committed to establish an office to oversee construction, transportation. There will be a designated monitor for the entire program from the beginning.
I guess my concern is that, you know, you're dealing with a very, a large area, a large construction area, a large construction, construction site, staging areas that will be offsite and coming from other areas. I think that's difficult to monitor, and that is something else that I, I'll take up with Ms. Misakowski after today and see if we can help you refine that. Next question, next category, I may run out of time, and I'll press my button again. I want to talk to you about, again, Inglewood, El Segundo, and Culver City, as well as job strategies for outreach to people who are homeless and have been working with community-based organizations, those who are unskilled, and, and those who may have been convicted felons, served their time, and have been working on their recovery through community-based organizations. So I'm going to let my time run out, and then I'm going to press it again and come back to you on that. Okay? Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're certainly all here at a very momentous time, I believe. And I, I think we're all here because we do believe that a safe airport, an efficient airport, greater vehicle efficiency, passenger efficiency is, is a good thing, and is a good thing not only for us, but certainly it is a good thing for the interest at large. And I, and I hope that some of those who are in opposition to this because they believe it, it, what we do at LAX in some way kills our commitment to a regional solution, I, I hope they hear that that is not true. And, and many of us have been calling for a regional solution for a long time. We think everyone should share in the benefits and the burdens of air traffic, and I don't think you will see any less of a commitment from anyone to make sure that we ultimately have a regional solution to, to our air transportation issues. Let me say, while it clearly, anyone who travels really knows that LAX is really outdated. It really is not as efficient either for passengers or for the airlines. And many airports in this country and abroad far surpass our modernization and our efficiency. And we look forward to today when we truly are the international airport, which we deserve. I say that, but I also say that clearly, this type of a project, and where we are today with the airport, certainly impacts local residents. And I feel like a lot of these issues are similar to what I experienced representing the Port of Los Angeles. While that certainly is the international trade industry hub for this entire region, and while we expect growth and jobs to triple in the next 20 years, I represent constituencies that are impacted on a daily basis by port operations, and we struggle with trying to find how we have good, clean growth, and more importantly, how we mitigate the, the projects and the growth of these industries. I will say, I want, I really do want to compliment my colleague, Sidney Misakowski, for really working hard to come up with a plan that we could describe what consensus means.[1800.73] means or not, but clearly, it is a plan that makes sense, as you said, not only for this council, but I think for councils in the future. And I really certainly want to compliment Tony for that unbelievable four and a half hour meeting in Commerce where I believe you had 96 questions, 99, where I think for many of us, even though we thought we understood the plan and thought we understood the elements, you really painstakingly brought forward some issues that I think had not been brought forward to life, and I certainly appreciated it, I certainly learned a lot. Does my time already expire? How can that be?
Sorry, go ahead. I'll give you another minute.
Thank you.
The thank you's coming. Shoot one this way when you can.
Yeah, don't start until I get done with the thank you's. And I do want to thank the airport staff. And I hope my senior staff management at the Port of Los Angeles is watching this because one of the things I've been particularly impressed with was, is your willingness to fight with the community, and particularly on the community benefits package, and willing to go to Washington DC to really stand with the community and standing up to the FAA and convincing them that indeed, this is the kind of benefits a community deserves, and that this is money that is legally spent and, and beneficial, not only now, but in the future. And we sort of have a doctrine at the port that prevents us from spending money the way we think. And it's very refreshing to see you on the side of those who are working on this community benefits package. Let me just say about the community benefits package. Sounds like you're still in negotiation. Are you, will, are you able or allowed to be any more specific about some of the things in that package without jeopardizing anything? I, I don't want you to do that. But I'm, I'm wondering, you know, we hear about the school issue, the job training issue, but I, I know there's more specific things that I am not sure you're allowed to talk about, but I think might be interesting for this council to know, what are we actually talking about in, in terms of this benefits package? I have two other questions.
We're happy to talk about that in general terms. As you said, we are in negotiation. I think we are very close to resolution on the technical side of things. There are lots of legal issues being resolved between lawyers. But generally, the community benefits package breaks down into five components. The first component is noise mitigation commitments, and within that, we're talking about end-of-block soundproofing programs, we're talking about the schools, soundproofing the schools, we're talking about increasing funding for noise mitigation programs in all those communities, and possibly night curfew. We're going to be doing an FAR, it's a Part 161 study, which is the only legal way that we can indeed enforce a night curfew, and we have agreed to take that on, to hopefully get a night curfew in place. The second category is economic developments, and that, that is the jobs program, it is a first source hiring program, it's a small business attraction retention program, and application of the city living wage and worker retention ordinances in all contracts. The third piece is the community benefits programs, which includes a health study and a mobile health center, environmental justice, community-based research studies, and community preparedness for airport-related emergencies. The community felt they didn't have enough information on how to respond to emergencies, so we're going to help get that message out. The fourth is really all related to the air quality issues we were talking about earlier. It includes many ways of reducing emissions. I think CDM went through some of them, but it is reducing emissions not just for traffic coming into the airport, but it's the trucks, it's all of the equipment at the airport that works on the airport well. We're looking at idling, we're looking at the electrification of gates and preconditioned air and all those elements. And then the last category is basically construction phase mitigations also related to the, the air pollution and also related to the, the particle control. So those are the five general categories.
Thank you. And we're all hopeful that those negotiations really come to a close, because I think this will be a model really not only for this project, for projects everywhere, not only here, but across the country. Let me ask you about MAP. Clearly, we're talking about, we hear the 78 million number, some of those who are opposed to this project keep throwing around a 90 million number. What is the reality in terms of MAP? How can we guarantee, what, what is in this plan that actually either guarantees a MAP or allows it to not be there? You know, some critics are, airlines are upset because they think it does limit it, and yet, the opponents of this project don't like it because they think it doesn't limit it. What exactly in this plan can you point to that actually either allows that, doesn't allow it? And what number are we really talking about?
Ms. Hahn, after this answer, can I ask you to press your button again?
All right. Even with all those thank you's?
We have taken an approach in design limiting the size of the airport around a reconfiguration of our gate systems. We saw as the development of the plan came forward, particularly with ground transportation, and as we moved, removed the congestion that occurs around Imperial and Century Boulevard, which really defined the airport in the future, in the next 15 years. If we do nothing, the airport will be defined, and the community will be defined, by gridlock around ground access. Our improvements remove that, so if you remove that, how else do you control the airport? And we've moved that into a concept and a design element where we reduce the gates, reconfigure the gates. Some of these gates have not been reconfigured since the days of the 707 and the DC-8. So the combination of removing remote gates, making all gates contact, and at the end of the project, 10 fewer gates, moving from 163 gates to 153 gates as a controlling factor to define the airport. It's novel, it's, it's not been done before. We're very confident that that process will work based on a historical analysis of business trends that shows the load factors, the volumes of the various airlines that move in and out of the airport. So we're very, we're very confident that the airport has complied with the mayor's pledge of defining the airport at 78 MAP.
Thank you. I'll give you more time, Ms. Hahn, anytime you want, but push your button, I'll give you more time. I'd like to call up Mr. Weiss, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and indeed, I think people, people will need a lot of time today. I appreciate the indulgence of President Padilla and of sitting President, Mr. Labange, to go through a presentation I'd like to make to my colleagues on the security issues. And I'm about to find out if I know how to use this button or not. But as you all know, security issues have been the principal focus of my work here and of my public policy efforts outside the city as well for the last three years. I don't just focus on security at LAX, I focused on a lot of issues relating to the new threat of terrorism. I take it very seriously. And I want to walk you through some of the studies and analyses that have been done regarding the yellow-lighted components of the LAX plan. Just let me make that clear as we go through this. I'm not talking about the green-lighted projects, which I support, I'm talking about principally the Manchester Square proposal. And, let's see, does this work? Yeah, cool. There've been a couple of studies that have been prepared. First was a RAND report commissioned by Congresswoman Jane Harmon. It followed on a draft SAIC report, which was then later issued in final form. Ms. Mizakowski and I helped convene a city security working group, and then an additional RAND study was commissioned. The important thing to know about the SAIC report, which is the security study that underlines alternative D, that underlines the Manchester Square yellow-lighted projects, is it did essentially what it was asked to do, a comparative security analysis of alternative D and the no-action, no-project alternative. This is very important, I believe, from a public policy standpoint. SAIC was not asked to analyze what are the security risks at the airport, what are the vulnerabilities, what are the threats, and what are the most effective and efficient ways to deal with them? No. SAIC was asked, is alternative D better than doing nothing? That's the wrong question analytically. They did what they were asked to do, but for that reason, we can't turn to SAIC for real knowledge here about what the best alternatives are. We turn to RAND. In the first RAND report that was commissioned by Jane Harmon, you all have heard about it, I'm going to put on the board a couple of clips from it, because I think it's very important for people to know what RAND actually said. And I'm just going to run through those with you. I do appreciate your indulgence on time, but it's, it's critically important. Thank you, Mr. Labange. What does RAND say? They say, "Not enough is known to evaluate the effect of alternative D on deterring or detecting attacks. Airport reconfiguration by itself is not likely to affect the number of casualties that result from attacks." This is in the first RAND report, talking about the Manchester Square proposals. And then RAND goes into an analysis that we see beginning in their first report and that they sustain in their second report that relates to passenger densities. In other words, their key insight is that protecting the airport and securing it, it's not a matter of whether you build a better mousetrap a mile away, or it's not a matter of whether you build a new mousetrap a mile away, it's about building a better mousetrap that reduces passenger densities in unsecured locations. Indeed, RAND notes that if the proposed ground transportation center, the Manchester Square facility, were eventually seen as, quote, "the airport," unquote, it would become the likely spot for a potential attack. RAND also goes through a whole variety of scenarios of potential attacks on the airport. And RAND writes, "There is little to distinguish alternative D from the current configuration for boosting security against attack by, for example, rocket-propelled grenades or mortars. Indeed, it is possible that reconfiguration by centralizing facilities would aggravate the effects of airport operations, on airport operations of such attacks." This is really important stuff, folks. This is really important. This is why, for some time now, I have been so concerned about the yellow-lighted projects and alternative D. They do not make us safer from a terrorist attack. And finally, as RAND noted, just, just so people know, "There is little to distinguish alternative D from the current configuration for boosting security against attack by non-conventional means." Because we hear press conference after press conference, "Alternative D and the new wave of terrorism is the way to go." That's not what RAND has found. Indeed, RAND finds that you're likely to have an increased need for security personnel at the airport because you'll be building a bigger airport. The personnel issue becomes critical when we look at the second RAND report, which talks about the need for additional TSA personnel and airline personnel to do the work to get people out of the unsecured areas and into the secured areas. So that is, in a, in a sense, what RAND did in their first report. Then, a second RAND report was commissioned after much discussions between the mayor, Ms. Mizakowski, Mr. Padilla, and myself. And in announcing that in May of this year, the mayor said, quote, "We all agree that we must improve security at LAX in this post-9/11 environment. Now is the appropriate time to commission a security analysis so that we are sure we are getting the greatest public safety returns on our proposed investments to improve LAX." He is exactly right in that quote. The problem is that that full-bore security analysis has not been done yet. The RAND analysis of alternative D is in, it is waiting in the wings. We haven't had it yet. I don't think it's responsible to vote on alternative D until you have that analysis. What does RAND write about in their second report? Well, several near-term options for improving security, all of which are doable, all of which are relatively inexpensive, and all of which could be done now. And they're in the PowerPoint you have in front of you, I don't need to belabor them, but things like getting more airline personnel, getting more TSA personnel to get people through those unsecured areas, having vehicle checkpoints, not vehicle checkpoints along the lines that you see now, but vehicle checkpoints to check for large truck bombs, large car bombs, the sort of devices, the Murrow Building sort of devices that could, could do terrible widespread damage.
Mr. Weiss, thank you.
Mr. Labange, I will conclude in one minute. Those are the sort of things we ought to be focusing on. And so my concern is simply this, folks. We have before us right now this alternative D package, which the airline industry has come to us and said, "Please pass it," or, "Strike it." They want this master plan. This is the perfect opportunity to leverage the airline industry and the TSA to provide us with the additional resources this city needs to protect the airport now, to boost security now in ways which are real, which are dramatic, and which are immediate. We should be putting our eggs in that basket, not in the basket of alternative D, which is likely never to happen, and even if it does happen, as RAND has pointed out in their reports, and which they ultimately are going to point out, I'm confident, in their third report, alternative D, Manchester Square, is not likely to provide security. That's why, and I will conclude, Mr. Labange, the Minority Report that will be before you today, "Greenlights the Green Light Projects," gets them built, but says, "Don't do these yellow light projects, there's no expert or community support for them." Thank you very much for your indulgence, Mr. President and colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for the record, as, as with Mr. Reyes, I did, I received a copy of the tape of yesterday's hearing, and fortunately, I had an hour and a half drive in this morning, so I got to listen to it all the way in this morning.
Mr. Smith, what was your favorite part?
I was going to address part of it right now, actually, with, because they're here. And that is, I wanted to counter some of the things that were said yesterday by, and I see Mr. Antonovich's staff, he says, "Please take this back to Mike for me." I heard in your presentation that Mike and others, Danny Snyder, others, all said that we need to put more effort into Palmdale, which I agree, in Ontario, I agree. That is not before us today because of two very big, important issues. First of all, Palmdale will never develop until the airlines want to go there. We can't force them. LAX, the city of LA, cannot force the airlines to use Palmdale as an alternative to LAX. And we cannot relieve the pressure on LAX with Palmdale until the airlines want to go there. They will eventually want to go there when we build a transportation corridor. And I think Ms. Mizakowski hit it on the head when she said, "We need to put pressure on the leaders of this region to go to Washington, to go to Sacramento, to go to MTA, and get funding to build a transportation corridor that will make Palmdale an attractive alternative for the airlines, that they'll want to go up there." And so I say to Mike and Danny Snyder, all the others about Palmdale, "I am in lockstep with you, I am arm-in-arm with you, I will go to Washington, we will fight for that." That is not here today, we're talking about LAX. And Palmdale is another issue for another debate, but we cannot use LAX funds to build a transportation corridor, we need federal assistance to do that, and that's another debate for another day. And we will take that up when the time comes. So I did hear those people talk, and I think that has to be said very clearly. That is not the safety valve today, that is the safety valve for tomorrow, and we need to work together to make that happen. I just came back, in fact, yesterday afternoon at 4:00 in the afternoon through Bradley Terminal. And I was on the unfortunate tour of dumps and trash facilities in Europe, not something anybody really wants to go do, but I took it upon myself to do. But as I came through Bradley Terminal yesterday, after having been in Brussels, where they have a beautiful new airport, having been in Frankfurt, which is the major hub for Eastern Europe and Middle Europe, fabulous new airport, I went through five security checks in less time than it took me to get through LAX, too. It is a well-run airport. I said to myself as I came through Bradley, well, I'm not going to say what I said to myself, because it wouldn't be very nice, but I said, "How did we let such an important international city like Los Angeles let this happen to our airport? What a disgrace, that we are rated number 20 out of 22 airports in the country for customer satisfaction, how did we let that happen? We are an international city of international importance and significance. We have the third-largest harbor in the world because a former council member stood up and said, 'We need to invest in our harbor.'" We have water in Los Angeles because a former council member stood up a long time ago and said, "Bring water from Northern California to Los Angeles." We have the Dodgers here because of Mr. Hahn, the former supervisor, standing up saying, "Let's be a, a city that has a baseball team." We have a Coliseum because we won the Olympics. We have Staples, and we, we have great things in a city because people have stood up and said, "It is time for us as a city to achieve the international greatness that we deserve by standing up and taking a position on important issues to make the city a great city." Unfortunately, we've talked for 10 years about this without anyone standing up and saying, "It is time to take that vision and put it into reality." And I want to commend Ms. Mizakowski for the very courageous role she has taken in opposing some of the people that live in her district on this issue, but by bringing leadership and vision along with Mayor Hahn to the city of Los Angeles. And I hope to God that in 20 years, some other council members will stand up and say, "That council back in 2004 had guts to do what was right, to make Los Angeles a truly great international city." And I commend both of you. I am honored to be able to be here today, had to fly in to do it, but I'm glad I'm here, I'm glad I'm awake, and I'm glad I'll be able to vote on this, and hopefully, we'll make it a reality, and this vision will become the reality in Los Angeles, will have truly the great international airport it deserves, as a truly great international city that it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Councilmember. Councilmember Zine from the 3rd Council District.
Thank you, Councilmember Labange. I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I commend Councilman Misakowski and Sharon Sander from our office to try and answer all my questions. And I reflect back, being a native Angelino, I reflect back going to, before it was International Airport, Los Angeles Airport, as a youngster, and seeing my friends fly to New York. And I remember a family, very close to my family, going down there and standing at the fence, the little chain-link fence, and watching the TWA prop plane taxi off and go on to New York. And the family rode in two different planes because at that time, when you flew, the family wouldn't all fly together in case of a tragedy. So I remember way back when, that airport was a small airport, and you'd stand at that little chain-link fence and watch it go. It was a real exciting experience. And I remember PSA, and I remember Continental, and I remember all the other airlines, TWA, Pan Am, they've all gone by the wayside. We've seen this city explode in population. We've seen this city explode in commerce. And when I look at Los Angeles International Airport today, and I flew in, last Thursday I flew out for a conference, and I flew back Sunday. And I remember waking up at 3:30 in the morning to get a 6:00 flight, or actually, 10 minutes to 7:00, from the San Fernando Valley because of traffic on the 405, traffic on the 101. And I remember going through the security check and greeting the LAPD officer who's sitting there on his wonderful compensation from the airport, thank you very much, to make sure that we have security. And seeing how we've exploded in this city, in population, and seeing how that airport is so inadequate for what we need today. And listening to Councilmember Weiss, and I know he's very concerned about security in the RAND study, but I look to the Los Angeles Police Department, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the FAA, people who are involved in that aspect. And as I understand, the Police Department has signed off on this. The Sheriff's Department has signed off on this. And with due respect to the RAND Corporation, law enforcement is the Sheriff's Department, the Los Angeles Police Department, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, they're involved in law enforcement. RAND does wonderful studies, but they're not on the front line knowing what needs to be done. I know there's some controversy about Manchester, but I look at where we are today in this airport, where we are today in this population, and I ask the question, will we have regionalization? We have Ontario, which is a beautiful airport. We have Palmdale. And I've never been to Palmdale Airport, wherever it is. I'm sure it's out there. But as the population increases, I know that the dairy farms are being removed out of San Fernando Riverside, and Ontario Airport is obviously going to get more traffic. And then, as the building takes place in north part of this region, hopefully, Palmdale Airlines will start taking over there. But what do we do about all the people who are here in this city and surrounding cities to get them to their destination? And God forbid, another attack takes place, and the airline industry suffers consequences that we know it did before. Las Vegas went down, the taxi drivers went down, everybody was suffering. And we're now recuperating. We're now coming back. If something were to happen, a question I have with these bonds that are being proposed, the airport is still part of the city of Los Angeles. Could someone, I asked the city attorney to respond to this. Well, it's an airport that is part of the city of Los Angeles, and it says, when you purchase that bond...
Mr. Zine.
Yes?
You're over your time.
Well, I'm getting to the question. I had to give a little prelude to this. I've been waiting for two days for this moment. What happens with the liability to the city of Los Angeles? While people say, "Yes, it's not really the city, it's the airport," if something were to happen, how safe is the city? Because we know the convention center is still a major debt to be paid. It hasn't been paid. Staples is doing extremely well, which is not the convention center. What about that aspect, where someone filing litigation against the city of Los Angeles, if something were to happen, and revenues, as we know in the past, went down from the airport? The airport was suffering the consequences about the security costs, the lack of flights, airlines cutting back. What about that aspect?
Well, first of all, as I mentioned before, we're very clear to bondholders and the investment community that they can only rely on airport revenues. If we can maybe look historically at some of the other airports that have undertaken large capital projects and have had problems of one kind or another, either cost overruns or, in the case of Denver, losing a major prospective hub carrier, none of these airports have ever gone to their city general funds for assistance. Typically, what has happened is that the investors and the Wall Street firms have worked to either restructure debt, or the debt has been defaulted on, and the bondholders have been stuck holding the bag. But again, it's very clear when the bondholder buys one of these bonds that that's the risk they're taking. And I did bring the language that we typically have on our official statements, if you'd like me to read it into the record.
So there is no risk to the taxpayer?
That's correct.
Okay, that's my ultimate concern. And then, finally, Kim, maybe you know the answer to this. How much have we spent on studies to this point, on consultants and studies at LAX?
With regard to the master plan?
Yes.
About $120 million.
Actually, about $130.
About $130 million.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Well, I'm not done.
I know, push your button if you want to ask again.
Before we spend another $130 million, we need to move forward and get something done. So I give an I vote that we move forward and get something done today, because it's not going to happen today, but at least we set the path for the future takeoffs and the future landings at that international airport.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for pushing me off the chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Councilman of the 14th District, Mr. Vieragosa.
Yes, Mr. President, members, if you could hold my time for some questions. We've been told for months that the price tag for the green and yellow-light projects together comes to about $9 billion. And in fact, a number of us were questioning that, even people who are now supporting it, that it could go up to $12 billion. We've now heard that the price tag in the Commerce Committee, as a result of questioning from the chair, is now at $11 billion. Can you explain the discrepancy for us?
Actually, it's not a discrepancy. It is that the latest numbers now include components related to escalation. We are, what we are projecting right now is that the green-light projects are approximately $3 billion, and the yellow-light projects are approximately $8 billion, for a total of $11 billion.
So, explain for me, when you say that it's a result of, I guess, what? You didn't actually say what it was.
Well, I think the original numbers that you saw were present-day, if we did the projects today, what they would cost. This is actually a program that's going to span many years, and we're going to...
How many years, by the way?
According, 10 years, according to the master plan document.
And when you say this plan, are you speaking about the green-light projects that'll take 10 years?
The entire project...
Or the green and yellow-light projects?
Yes.
The yellow-light projects that supposedly won't happen with the specific plan that we have today without approval?
The schedule that is in the environmental documentation says the entire program will be done by 2015.
So given that the cost of steel and labor and all of the things have gone up, could it be $13 billion at the end of a 10-year period?
It's, I can't say it won't be, but I do think...
Could it be $15 billion?
I think that the escalation costs that we have put on these are given to us by people who really understand the industry, and it is their best guess that, considering all the fluctuations, that we will be at...
Were these the same people that originally estimated a $9 billion estimate?
In fact, this has to do with that $9 billion escalated. Yes, it's based on the same project costs.
Same people. Now, the city attorney issued a letter stating that trying to eliminate any yellow-light project from Alternative D would mandate a substantial environmental restudy that could take anywhere from 10 to 30 months. That is being termed a fatal delay in terms of the viability of the current EIR and EIS. Given that the master plan opponents are vowing to file SEQA and other suits against approval of this council, if we grant this, if no changes are made to the package before us, how is it that choosing to delay things to get a better master plan puts us in any worse of a position than fighting lawsuits over a flawed one?
Claudia Culling, City Attorney's Office. I think that the...
Will you fix the microphone there, Kim?
Claudia Culling, City Attorney's Office. The situation that we addressed in our letter was, if you removed the GTC from the program, what might be the results? And what we said was, if you remove it now, you will have to spend time and money doing a study in order to support it because the way the programmatic level EIR was done did not take out each project, did not individually identify all the mitigation measures and the impacts of each project, but rather looked at it at a programmatic level. So we said that if you wanted to change the project now, you will be changing the project definition, and you will have to address it in a certain way, which means time and money. And we believe that if it takes 10 to 30 months, and we suggested that 30 was more reasonable, if it took 30 months in order to fix this, that you would have to go back to the beginning, and you would have to look at whether 1996 data as the base year and the horizon year of 2015 would be appropriate. That's what we said in our letter.
Wouldn't we have to do that anyway if, for instance, during a specific plan evaluation, we were looking at the question of the GTC? Wouldn't we have to do an environmental, an EIR for that?
We intend to do...
It could take 10, 30 months or more?
LAWA intends to do an environmental impact report for every one of the yellow-light projects as they come through. Every single one will have an environmental impact report of some, at some level.
Now, explain why that wouldn't jeopardize the project in any way.
Well, right now, let's, let me just give you an idea. Right now, if you approve this project on December 7th, the, LAWA can go forward with processing the South Runway, for instance, project immediately. As soon as the federal government issues its record of decision, they can go forward with that. If, however, you decide to study everything now to change the project description, that particular project over which I haven't heard around the horseshoe any compliance, that project cannot go forward until you finish. So can you do some of the projects now, or do you have to wait till later to do any of the projects? That could be a significant difference.
But there still would be a delay associated with an EIR with respect to the evaluation of the GTC or any other yellow-light project?
What I'm trying to explain is the word delay. It may not be a delay. Yes, you couldn't start that until you did this whole process, but in the meantime, you would be doing other things. And so while the green-light projects are going, you can take a look at all of those issues related to the yellow-light projects. So when the time comes where you would normally get to them, you will have done all that study, and you can take a look at whether you want to go forward or not go forward with those.
Now, the master plan claims to limit passengers to 78 million a year, and I think you spoke to that. Yet, why is it that many have said that the federal government won't allow a cap, one, but, two, that this proposal puts, allows for a cap of 90 million instead of 78 million? Can you kind of more clearly speak to that specific, the discrepancy between 78 and 98? 90, rather, is the claims of some of the opponents?
Well, maybe for Jim Gibson, technically, let me make it very clear. We are not capping the airport. We cannot legally cap the airport.
I understand that. I'm very clear about that.
Okay. Go ahead.
You will see over time, particularly through the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, some of their forecasts have gone with numbers that high. There has been outside analyses based on different approaches that come up with different numbers. We have taken a rather realistic approach, based on the history of the airlines, their load factors, the size of our gates, went through a very detailed formula that I won't bore you with. But as we have reconfigured the entire airfield, our approach is that we develop something rather novel from an FAA standpoint, much like Kim says, avoiding the onerous federal process to get the airport federally capped, but doing it in a different way. And that is by designing in, building in a constraint around the gates. So many gates can only be filled up at a certain rate, and we have tracked that through business models. So that's where we come from.
Do those business models include the Airbus, the new Airbus?
That's correct, they do. And of course, the Airbus...
How many of them?
How many Airbus? Let me ask for some technical support with Mr. Nick Johnson.
Qantas is by 19, I know that for sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Nick Johnson with LAWA. There are spaces for, specific spaces for about six of those airplanes in the full build-out of the program. However, there are...
There's a contact gate. Six contact gates.
Exactly. Contact gates, essentially where you have a loading bridge up against the building, and you walk through that loading bridge, as many of you have before.
So in your calculation, with six of those contact gates, as you call them, how many airbuses would be coming into LAX?
Right now, the airlines have come to us with their programs for introduction of that airplane. And right now, we see over the next number of five to seven years, about 30 total operations, or about 15 flights a day of the Airbus A380 is the new large aircraft that we're talking about here. And we're prepared to be able, we would be prepared in the future to be able to handle that level of activity. It would operate in conjunction with all the other gates that we have operating at the airport at the same time.
So even though you don't have an exact number, you think that that number would keep us below the 78 million map with the number of, the reduced number of gates from 173, I think you said, to 163?
163 to 153.
163 to 153. Now, let me ask you about the community benefits. I've been very concerned. This is, this is an $11 billion project, maybe as high as a $15 billion project after 10 years. I'll bet you a good dinner that it's going to go well beyond $11 billion. But 11 to 15 billion dollar project, and as I understand it, the community benefits package has about $5 million specific, well, why don't you tell me, why don't you share with me what it has? I was about, you didn't let me finish, but why don't you let me, share with me what's exactly in that community benefits package?
We're estimating the community benefits agreement to be valued at about $500 million.
Are you including the school?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
If we take the schools out, it's about $250 million.
So has the schools deal been penned already? You've already come to agreement on that, on the 200 million?
No, that's the, that would be the replacement value of the schools that they've requested. It's not a dollar amount. It's an actual activity. It's a replacement school that is within the CBA.
And you're calculating that? Okay, so take out the schools, share with me what's in the community benefits package currently, separate and apart from the schools.
There remains a value of about $250 million related to other noise mitigation measures, including, I think, the end-of-block soundproofing. There is the, all of the environmental activities, the conversion of all of the ground service equipment to electric motors. There is the jobs program. And I think where you're actually going was the jobs program there.
Tell me about the jobs program.
The jobs program has two parts. The, with...
And what is that estimated, the cost of the jobs program estimated?
Actually, just the main...
The Coalition came to us with their first request of $1 million a year for five years job, job training.
That's what I was getting to. So it's a $5 million...
But that's only half of the jobs program. But yes, go ahead.
$5 million, 11 to 15 billion dollar investment in the region, and we have a $5 million community benefits package. After five years.
That is the number the Coalition has come to us with. We have had subsequent conversations with people here within this council, and we are open to changing the language so that it is...
Tripling it, one would hope. When you're looking at $15 billion, well, let's think about it for a second. Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $15 billion over 11 years. $15 billion over 11 years, and we can't make a $15 million investment over five in a community benefit specifically targeted to job creation for people who historically have been underrepresented in many of these jobs?
Since, since the program is going to be, LAWA funding money to CDD, what we're suggesting is that CDD tell us what it's going to take to operate this jobs program throughout the life of the master plan. And whatever that number is, we will agree to.
Thank you. If you want to conclude your remarks, Mr. Vieragosa.
Yes, I'll press my button again for my next series of questions. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Doing a fine job this afternoon. Appreciate your work. I'm going to, I think, a little bit of everything has been said here today. I do want to thank Councilmember Reyes for the manner in which we started today because I hope, for a number of reasons, people got some clarity out of what we're doing here today versus what we would be doing on December 7th, and what the opportunities are between now and December 7th to address some of the components of what's in front of us. I recognize that we don't want to make substantive changes that would continue to delay, but that there still are, as I view it, two more cracks at the apple to look at some of the specifics. I want to mention, reiterate a couple of things that Councilmember Smith mentioned in terms of... in terms of why I am supportive of this today. There has been, there have been a number of discussions, a number of issues raised. I have kept a very open mind on this project, and up until just recently, hadn't completely made up my mind on where I was going to go on this. But there have been a number of things that have been shared to me that I find very, very comforting in where we are, and I want to take this moment to thank Councilmember Misakowski for, for her leadership on such a major, major issue, as well as the Chair of our committee, Councilmember Cardenas. First and foremost is that one of the big issues that I looked at in this is what has been happening in the tourism industry as a result of the committee that I chair. We're looking at a $24 billion industry, ladies and gentlemen, that in Los Angeles represents over a quarter of a million jobs. We believe that if the city of LA is forthright, demonstrates leadership, this industry should and ought to respond upwards to a 30 to 32 billion dollar industry to LA. We're not only looking at the hotel in downtown LA, but the number one criticism we get back from international tourists from around the world, as we just had Powell here in LA, is the challenges facing them at, at LAX. And when, I forget which colleague it was yesterday that talked about airports around the world and around the country that are really upgrading and are beginning to become the leaders that we ought to be, if in fact, we're going to be the leader as the major international destination point worldwide. So I think it is a matter of jobs right now, and I think it's a matter of the economy, and I think that on December 7th is really where I think the rubber meets the road, and I think we should step up as a city on December 7th and make that major statement. I also want to commend Councilmember Jack Weiss for continuously pushing the issue of, of safety and continuously pushing the issue of terrorism. What I have seen in this report and in this master plan is a moment that we should all congratulate you, Jack. I don't know where you are right now, I'm sure you're here in the chamber somewhere, but you ought to take a lot of pride in what I, in what we see in this master plan. Because in fact, many of the issues that you've raised are now in this master plan, and as I see it, over the next 35, 45 days, we'll get an opportunity to be looked at in even greater detail, but not the least of which is the next three-year period. Final issue for me, really, is that our vote today says pretty directly, move forward on the green light projects, and I think that's something that there's been unanimity on, but it says, don't delay on studying the yellow light projects. And I would encourage those council members that are concerned right now, that you don't give up at this moment. In fact, take a lot of pride in what you've been arguing for and what you've been fighting for, and let's spend the next three years not delaying a $3 billion economic package for the city of LA, and don't delay a $3 billion opportunity to begin fighting for the environmental improvements that we all want to see. That, to me, is the heart of the issue. I appreciate the city attorney for answering Mr. Vierigosa's question. And as I wrap up, Mr. President, I would like to say two things that I would like to see LAWA come back with and staff come back with. I would like to ask for, introduce a friendly amendment that we look at a $15 million jobs package through the community benefits package, the specific local hiring program. I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment that, that staff report back to Tony's Committee Commerce on moving that forward, and I'd second it by.
Seconded and moved, very good.
And I'd like to also introduce and ask a friendly amendment on one other item. I think Councilmember Vierigosa makes a good point. It's something that a number of us have been talking about, and I know Councilmember Parks is passionate about this as well. I think we, as a city, have to dig much deeper to make sure that underserved and low-income communities and the firms that are, that still, that grew up there, live there, and are doing business there, get an opportunity at this $11 billion pie. And so I'd like to ask staff to report back to the committee what it would take to put some type of premium or some type of, an opportunity, and setting aside some percentage of this, to look at firms that are in low-income census tract areas of the city of Los Angeles, and you might even want to look at the entire county of Los Angeles, so that cities like Inglewood and Lenox and Hawthorne have a shot at that. But I'd like to ask for a second on that friendly amendment.
Very good, thank you.
So with that, I am proud to cast my vote in favor of this project. I want to thank all of the community organizations, not the least of which have been LANE and SCLC and NAACP and the Urban League and MALDEF and many of the other great organizations that have come together around this community benefit packages. And let me tell you, Cindy Misakowski doesn't know how to do anything small. She takes on the big issues and she makes them make sense. I can't tell you how honored I've been to serve on this council with her. She's done a great job. We should all be indebted, and thank you all. I vote yes on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Eric Garcetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Labange, and thank you, Mr. Ludlow, for your words as well. Colleagues, our world is increasingly defined by action and by the pace of, by which our world moves. There is a price to pay for inaction. As we look at the world that we compete in, whether it's another city that wants to take the same planes that we get, whether it's another city that wants to be the economic hub of the Pacific Rim, there is a price of inaction. I've been thinking about this a lot, because I think you all know, many of us have been working very hard on Proposition O, and I was talking to a reporter who said, how did the city let the storm drains get to where they were? Well, we had federal requirements that came down that were unexpected, but it was because we had inaction that we face big action now. It is because in this city, there hadn't been a comprehensive high school constructed since the year I was born here in 1971, that a few years ago, we suddenly faced the price of inaction on schools, when businesses said, we don't have the schools to give us the workforce of tomorrow, to train people in the trades, to give people good-paying jobs. There is a price of inaction, and today, I think, we should say to ourselves that we're going to continue to turn that tide here in Los Angeles. It is a defining moment for our city, whether or not we can take action responsibly, take action with checks, take action with asking the environmental questions and the community-based questions that are so important, but nevertheless, have the courage to take action. The years, I think Emerson once wrote, "The years tell us things that the days cannot see." And as we look back on the years of inaction in our city, we see things that each day we might not have seen, and each day gives us an excuse as to reasons why we shouldn't take a vote today, a reason why we shouldn't build today, a reason why we shouldn't move forward today. But suddenly, the years give us the tally and the cost of that. I appreciate the, the comments that both Antonio Vierigosa and Martin Ludlow gave on job training. I was going to cover that, but I, but it's already been covered, so I fully support that. I'd like to look at us possibly doing a tripling of our local job hiring programs and really set a model, because the city can, we're all in agreement about this, and we should move forward in that. Inaction with the schools right now, if we don't move forward, as Cindy Misakowski said, those schools and those kids who are in those schools where things are horrible, deplorable, don't get that solved. We say, we're actually going to put it off, so while you're in school, sorry, we're going to have to wait for your little brother or your little sister to actually have an education where you don't have screaming airplanes going through your windows. I want to thank Ms. Perry for her environmental questions. I introduced a motion as well, colleagues, as Misakowski seconded on LEED standards, and I know there's been, LEED is Leadership in Environmental and Engineering Design, to make sure that we have the most environmentally sensitive construction as well. I know it's something Mr. Smith is very passionate about, Mr. Padilla. We've looked at airports around the world, Curacao, Tacoma, Vancouver, who have, Logan in Boston, who have already started to build in a LEED-certified way. There's some buildings that have been gold standards in Seattle, Tacoma. We need to do that here, and I think this motion goes a long way into doing that, too. I'd also like to ask of LAWA, before the December 7th vote, to start scoping locations for a Hollywood flyaway location. Hollywood is one of, is the number one tourist destination in America. It's one of the places where we really have a hole in our flyaway infrastructure, and we've been working very closely, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, our Community Development Agency, and we need to have that as well before then. I want to thank Mr. Weiss for his work on security. I agree with Manchester Square, but that doesn't mean I can't vote for this. I think Manchester Square is, in many ways, ill-thought-out, but we will have the chance to discuss that at a future date and make sure that we do have security. But as we look at the timeline, whether it's the Airbus 380 and whether our competitors are going to get there before us, we have some really important things that affect jobs right now that we have to make the decisions on. And the last thing I'll say, and I appreciate your indulgence, I'll go about a minute and a half total, not new, but over, is as we look at regional thought, now is the time to not only do what Mr. Smith said, that somebody will look back on this council and say, they have the courage to act now on what we need to do for the 10- or 15-year plan, but begin to spend the money on scoping and studying what it will look like in places like Palmdale. Of course, it can only happen with a regional rail infrastructure. But as we travel to places like Hong Kong, as you travel to Shanghai, as you travel to Korea, and you see that that is one way, you see some airports that have completely gone out of commission. We can go two routes, but maybe the Denver-Stapleton route is something that we do one day, and we return LAX to something else where it can have a gateway park and, and homes there instead of an airport, when we actually have the infrastructure to finally do that. Airports then will want to, but not if we sit on our hands again and because of term limits, so don't start thinking about 25 years ahead. The, the last quote I wanted to give is Douglas Adams, Hitchhiker's Guide to Galaxy, once wrote, "Airports are ugly, some are very ugly, and some attain an degree of ugliness that can only be the result of a special effort." Let's not make that special effort of greater inaction, so that we look back on not only the worst-rated airport, or one of the worst-rated airports because we haven't invested, one of the ugliest airports because we haven't invested. Let's create something that, while it's not going to be a diamond, is still going to be a diamond in the rough, and you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a variety of questions. One thing, I would follow up on a question Mr. Vierigosa asked about the cost, because one of the things, and supposedly, some figures came to us, that was in the October 20th article that was in the Daily News, it said it was verified by the airport. And at that time, he was talking about nine, oh, let's see, $9,800 million. And then, I believe, at one of our recent meetings, we received numbers from LAWA at $9 billion. I'm just wondering now, we're saying today 11, whether we can reconcile that, or whether we can get something that shows accurately today what the cost is going to be?
We, we can certainly give you what we have. Accuracy, I will say, is, is an issue, because we are right now developing costs on a very broad conceptual level. We've started the advanced planning, and within the advanced planning, we will be looking at each of the projects in detail and be able to refine some numbers and have better numbers for you. But we certainly can give you the numbers we have today, which are the same as the $9 billion that we gave you before, it's just now we have told you what we believe it really is with escalation involved because of the length, of the duration of the implementation.
I don't think we, we agree that you can give us precise, but within a billion.
Actually, I think, I think even at this point, within a billion sounds precise, doesn't it?
The, the other thing I was wondering is that, in dealing with the current plan, what is your estimation as to the green, the yellow light projects? How much of our mitigation is in, within those projects versus the green light?
Wow, that's a question we've never been asked.
That's a very good question. It's, it's, it's broken out percentage-wise, project by project. Some of the mitigation for a ground transportation-related issue is more heavy on ground transportation. But it's basically a proportional share of, by project, by mitigation, so as the project, whatever it may be, is built and goes forward, the community gets that mitigation effort concurrently.
Because what we keep hearing is that most of the mitigation plans are around Manchester Square, and if that's so, or if it's off, off the platform of the airport, if there's some way that we can get that figured, it'd be important to say what's in the yellow light versus the green light, and what is it that we estimate is the mitigation that would not come forward if we only built the green light?
We can certainly develop that for you. I will say that really, the big mitigation hit is taken largely by the first project. Because it is the first project out of the box, Runway 25 Left has to take on a lot of mitigation that's related to the program as a whole, in addition to its own as a project. But we will certainly come back to you with, with a breakdown of the mitigation on a project by project basis.
And then let me ask you this second-most-asked question, and I know it probably was a term of convenience, but when we hear the term consensus plan, what we keep getting asked throughout the community, who was part of the consensus, what was the consensus, because the community keeps saying they weren't part of it?
Well, I hate to turn this to Councilwoman Misakowski, but I think she's the best person to answer this.
Mr. Parks, there were people who testified yesterday in support of this plan who had not supported it when it came forward. ATA and the airlines, in fact, had opposed it. They were now brought into the fold. Even many who testified from ARSAQ, who said, "We don't believe this is a plan we support." There are things in the plan today, that are in the plan today because ARSAQ asked for them. So the specific plan attempted to incorporate and listen to a broad spectrum of the community. There are, there are things in the specific plan that El Segundo asked for, there are things in the specific plan that the LA County asked for. So whether or not it's gone 100% of consensus, there were a lot more people totally opposed. In fact, the Chamber of Commerce had not expressed its support before the consensus plan came forward. So it's a consensus plan, an evolving consensus plan, because even to date, I have met and continue to meet with LA County, with others who spoke yesterday and said, can you add this between the day of today and December? And you've heard motions around the table that people are asking for. So there is language that can be changed, but substantively, it is not changing. It is just bringing more people with clarity into what those definitions are.
Okay, thank you. One thing, I think in one of the discussions that's been going on and on, if you basically start all over, or start with another master plan, the view is, with a certain time, two years, 30 months or so, most of our data is dated, and the fear is, is that you'd have to start from scratch. What I'm concerned about is that whether that delay is caused by litigation, or it's caused by creating a new master plan, or it's caused by specific plans, so specific EIRs based on approval of this plan, and it gets in the range of the 24 to 30 months, what difference does it make?
Claudia calling City Attorney's Office. Let me just respond to some of that. If the, LAWA is sued on, or the city is sued on the environmental impact report, that doesn't keep the projects from going forward. What happens is, normally, you go to a writ court and the court will say, here's something, you know, everything's fine, or here's something that was done improperly, go fix it, and you fix it. But that doesn't mean we can't be going forward in the meantime on the South Runway, for instance. So it makes a difference about whether you do it now or you do it later because of the projects that we're running forward now.
Okay. But that's on the most positive side of the court ruling for the city. What if there's an injunction?
The court won't, the court won't do that. What the court will do, the court doesn't, the state court does not issue injunctions in this context. What they will do is they will tell us what's wrong and how it needs to be fixed, or send us back to fix it. But that won't enjoin us from going forward on our project. Now, we take a, we could be taking a risk that we're going forward and the court won't like what we did when we redid it, but pretty much you know when the court issues its decision whether you're going to be able to fix that or not fix that.
And I might add also, from a process standpoint, I can give you a, a good reference point, following September the 11th and the new reconfiguration as we started in the fall of 2001, Packaging Alternative D, that I'm proud that we've presented that with a range of alternatives to this body today. It's, from a process standpoint, I would agree with the city attorney's opinion of around 30 months to get there. We could even go back and take a look at the length of time that it took from a process, keeping in mind that we have not only a, a State of California SEQA environmental process, but it is a joint document with the federal government. Alternative C, its predecessor took a similar amount of time to get to the same point.
Okay. Let me ask you my final question on this round, is that one of the things I think Mr. Weiss put forth, a, a very in-depth analysis with his handouts, and also in dealing with RAND 1 and RAND 2, how do we reconcile going forward without finding out what RAND 2 says?
Well, I think that in parallel with doing the advanced planning, as we better define every project, we're going to be doing the security analysis on every project. What RAND has done in this past study is they have looked at what the existing vulnerabilities are, basically validated the vulnerabilities that were the basis for all D. So we're, we're feeling very comfortable that what RAND has just done in their last study is totally consistent with where we were going, and that as we do further analysis on each project and that parallel security analysis, that we will be in sync.
Do you don't view that RAND 2 be inconsistent with anything that you're currently doing?
Intuitively, I don't believe that. The RAND study says that car bombs are a threat, and we believe that the, the cars have to be out of the central terminal area. The RAND study also says that density is an issue, and I think there, there is kind of a prevalent misconception that what we're attempting to do in Alternative D is to put everyone into one spot, which is the GTC. That's not the case at all. In fact, Alternative D spreads the population that is now in one place, in the CTA, between the GTC, the Ground Transportation Center, the Rental Car for Center, the Intermodal Facility, and all. Facility, and all of the flyways. So just intuitively, we think we are addressing both of the RAND's big vulnerability issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Padilla, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Parks' first question about who defined consensus and why was this labeled a consensus plan, I think is an important one, and I couldn't agree more wholeheartedly. I do rise today in support of the plan that is before us, and do so for a number of reasons. I know a lot of the members around this horseshoe are asking very specific questions, very technical questions. But in the grand scheme of things, here's how I see it. The discussion of whether or not to upgrade our airport, if you will, began, as has been said, more than 10 years ago, when Mayor Riordan first was elected during his first term. And it was cited then that it had been a whole 10 years since the Olympics and the last significant improvement at the airport. And so, we followed this discussion through the Riordan administration, we followed the discussion through the early years of the Hahn administration, before his release and announcement of alternative D. And I just want to really commend you and congratulate Cindy Missakowski for being the one to pull all the ideas together, the stakeholders together, and hammer out what to a lot of people isn't necessarily a completely different alternative or different plan, but colleagues, the biggest value in what Councilmember Missakowski has brought to our consideration is a process for moving forward. A process for moving forward through the specific plan, as she has articulated. So a discussion which at one point was whether, about expansion, whether or not to expand it, and it was labeled an expansion plan, then evolved into a modernization plan, because we were approaching the new millennium. And now Mayor Hahn calls it a security plan. I think it is very appropriate that in a post-9/11 environment, with the city of Los Angeles being the first major airport to consider these types of issues post-9/11, you know, let it not be lost upon us, that not only are the eyes of the city of Los Angeles on us right now, but really the eyes of the country and the eyes of the world with respect to what we do at LAX, and specifically with what we do at LAX in regard to security. You know, the conversation based on Mr. Parks's question, just ended a minute ago about, you know, car bombs versus, you know, concentrated areas, you know. That was one of my big questions when Mayor Hahn's plan was first rolled out. What are we guarding against? You want to guard against a car bomb? There's ways to do that, pretty effectively. Or do you want to guard against a suicide bomber? Well, there's ways to possibly guard against that, rather effectively. Or regarding against surface-to-air missiles. It's part of the reality that we live in today, and I am, I for one, challenge the notion that we have to guard against one, or the other, or the other. I am for the notion that we have to guard as effectively as we can against all possibilities. And between intelligence and physical designs, I think we can do that pretty well. The specific plan element of what Cindy Missakowski has brought to us, I think even more so ensures that this council as a body, this council as an institution, will continue to have the leverage in future years over the elements of the project that don't have unanimous or even contentious support. There's elements of the plan, as we've been saying, I'm going to be repetitive here, that nobody really disagrees with. The separation of runways, the car rental stuff, international terminal, et cetera. All the elements of the plan that are giving people heartache or concern, they will be back before us, and I am confident that they will have a high threshold to clear before they gain those necessary future approvals in order to move forward. So I get a lot of comfort in knowing that, and again, thank Cindy Missakowski as the first person, among all the mayors, among all the council members, to bring this process for moving forward to the table. And finally, because I know my time has run out, just want to say, I hope we don't lose the next golden opportunity. I think to address some of the concerns or criticisms of some of the members around this horseshoe about long-term regionalization of air traffic in Southern California. We've done a tremendous job of bringing people around the table, to think that we have the city, and the airline industry, and the organized labor, and the business community, and to a large extent, community-based organizations that impacted residents, around the table, working together, talking to each other. You know, we've been effective at utilizing that to bring forth a master plan and a process to move forward. I want to make sure we don't lose that when we get to the next question of the regionalization of air traffic. Let's not wait another year, or two, or three to revisit this question. Let's leverage the environment and the working relationships that we've established to start addressing that now. And I know Mr. Cardenas is going to continue to have hearings in his committee over the next 45 days on the financing element of this, on the community benefits agreement of this, including the local contracting, local hiring, that of minority and women-owned employees and contractors. I would respectfully request that we also have this question get its special attention and hearing in the next 45 days. What I would hate to see is that a year from now, everybody's gone on their merry way to the next big airport project in another city, or to the next local concern, and we'd have to put all the work back into bringing everybody together. Let's take advantage of the golden opportunity we have now, sitting together, working together, working with each other in good faith, to move forward on regionalization.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Councilmember Wendy Grule of the 2nd District.
I think I'm the last one to speak for the first time, right? Is that correct?
No, I'm honoring, I'm not speaking.
You're not speaking, okay. We should write that in the history books today, that's right?
Thank Phil DePoy.
Just giving you a hard time, Mr. Labange. I have a couple of comments and questions, and I think I'll probably go for the questions first, relative to yellow light, green light, and Claudia, this is a question for you. And Missakowski, I think I might be second in the number of specific plans in my district currently, so very familiar with the benefits of having a specific plan and its ability to control future action, and the ability for the public to have part, a part in that decision-making process, as well as the council. My question is relative to the yellow light, green light. Is this, is this a legal term? Is it a term we have determined here in the city that we feel is within standing if we were challenged about green light versus yellow light?
First of all, let me make it clear, Claudia Cullen, City Attorney's Office, let me make it clear, there's no green light, yellow light words anywhere. This is a term that we've brought to the table to try to...
And maybe in future, you know, I mean, this is precedent setting, so...
Well, let's not use those terms, okay? It's a way we have described how some projects can go through with a lower level of scrutiny, although every project comes to city council. The green light projects do not trigger further studies, other than their normal environmental work that needs to be done for them. And also, that the council has for the green light projects 30 days to decide whether they even want to take it up. And if they don't want to take it up, the Board of Airport Commissioners Action will stand. If they do want to take it up, and they want to modify it or deny it, then they need 10 votes. So that's the difference between the green light and the yellow light.
Sorry, my time's been going, so just so you know, I think I have two, okay, two. You give a lot of extra time, okay. It's been going, why don't you answer the question? The RAND study that was, is the first one that was completed, and this may be for the airport or for Cindy, and now they've indicated they're part of the process, and are going to be working closely with you. What is the timing of their report back, and its implications to the master plan or the future project approvals?
Well, actually, as we go forward through the advanced planning, they are just an integral part of the team, so there is no specific end of their work. They will be working with us continually as we look at each project and further develop them over the next few years.
But in addition to that, the specific plan calls for a security analysis to be done before we can get to any of the yellow light projects. So in fact, there's, in addition to them working with the team, if the airport wants to bring forward a yellow light project, they're going to have to do a security analysis of that project before they can bring it forward.
And that's part of the specific plan requirement?
That's part of the specific plan.
And just so, and you may have answered this question before, because there's been lots of people asking something similar to this, but, for example, I mean, and you've heard a couple of my colleagues and myself have concerns about Manchester Square, because of the issues raised by RAND, because of public concerns, et cetera, that give us, and it's a both, it's a legal question and a public policy question. If we decided today to say, you know, we're going to approve the EIR that is before us and the master plan, and it comes back in the seventh, but as a body, we really don't agree with one aspect of that, which is Manchester Square, and we know it's going to change in the future. Is that a legal problem for us?
Could I just say something before we jump into that, which is, I think there is a misconception, we need to separate this out. The acquisition program in Manchester Square has nothing to do with this master plan, right?
Correct. That's been going on for a long time.
And it will continue to go on no matter what is done here today. So just so that we're clear now, Claudia, if you want, sorry.
Because even if we don't build the...
The ground transportation center.
The GTC there, there would be potentially other things you could do for that site.
Well, it's basically, it's a voluntary acquisition program. The community came to us and asked us to buy those properties in lieu of us soundproofing those homes.
The project description and the environmental impact report that responds to that project description includes the Ground Transportation Center. That's how it was all, it was analyzed, the entire master plan program was analyzed and at a programmatic level in the EIR, to include all of the pieces. If you want, if you know now that you absolutely, I mean, if you know down the road what you're going to do, you know what the future council's going to do, and the future mayor's going to do, and you know that you don't want this alternative, then you should pick another alternative. If you think that there are parts of this that you want, but you want to study further some of the other pieces before you go forward, then you can go forward under this construct. Did that answer your question?
Not the way I thought you were going to answer that. I guess because I do have problems with Manchester Square as it's currently proposed, and I think there are many of my colleagues that do too.
And it will come before you for you to look at.
And so what we've been told is, under the specific plan process, we will be able to determine whether to move forward on that project or not.
You will, that's, yes, that's true.
Okay. So, yeah.
Well, I guess the difference between what we're saying, I think, if I can read your mind, the difference between what we're saying is that if a majority of the council felt that they knew now what they want to do, and it doesn't include what's included in the master plan, then you want to look at one of the other alternatives. But if members of the council, not necessarily what this future council's going to do, have feelings about a particular item, you will still have that opportunity later. In other words, this has to do with reading the future council. The council will have the opportunity to look at each one of those projects as they come down the road. And the specific plan provides that opportunity, that process.
I think I would rephrase it a little bit different. I would say, if you look at alternative D, and there is nothing in there you support, then you should look at another alternative. But if there are elements in it that you do support, but the projects that we call yellow light are ones you can support, then you should move ahead with alternative D, because all of the mechanisms are in place for you to make later decisions based on better information on those projects.
Okay. And if we decided, a future council, which, who knows how long it's going to take us, it'll come back, but some of us may or may not be here, and we chose to not go with Manchester Square, and instead had a scaled-down version, or a change to that, et cetera, that does not at all cause us problems relative to the passing of today's EIR?
No.
It would not require a full EIR, it would only be a project base.
All of the projects, all of the projects will require EIRs. If down the road, when you try to bring forward a yellow light project, you're going to have to do a look at the entire specific plan and the master plan at that time. If it looks like that's, that project is not going to go forward, and it looks like that the assumptions that were made in the EIR to support the entire master plan caused some problem with the analysis of that, because each of these project EIRs will be tearing off, using some of the, in other words, using some of the information that's in the programmatic level EIR. If we see that that information can't be used anymore, or there becomes a problem, there are assumptions that we can no longer use, we probably will have to do a whole nother review. But that's down the road, we have to do that.
And that could occur if RAND came forward as part of the team and said, you know, we have found in our review, and the world has changed, and the TSA, or whomever is coming forward and saying that we need to, this is not the way to go, then we can make those changes.
Right.
So Kim answered it actually the way I thought that that's what I was looking at, because there are parts of it that I don't necessarily agree with, but believe and understand where Missakowski came up with a plan that gives some ability for us to review it as a specific plan option in the future, and has those kind of controls, because...
Well, that's why you hire me to be your lawyer and not your mind readers.
Or public policy. There's, you know, we do say that lawyers and the public policymakers don't always agree, and I know Mr. Weiss would probably say that too. But I think that I have been impressed with the discussion on the benefits agreement today, and Mr. Ludlow's amendment to increase that, because it is a huge economic engine for the future. I think security is my number-one priority, and to ensure that what we do is first-rate and happens as quickly as possible. And I think obviously the other traffic and transportation is critically important. I came in on Monday night, and my husband said, "Are we voting, are you voting on this week? This will improve transportation here and traffic." I said, "That is the hope and the plan." I think the other part of it is the schools and some of the issues. I went out, as many of my other colleagues did, to the Lenox School District, and at first said, you know, "Why am I driving out to the Lenox School District to see the school?" And when you stand on that yard, in their schoolyard, playyard, and you see the windows, as I know Missakowski has as well, and I think Mr. Cardenas went down there too, you understand how time is of the essence. I just think the last thing I would say about this, and I may or may not push my button again, since Mr. Padilla's also been generous with me on my time, is I think there's probably agreement that this process has not been the best from beginning to end, that, and this way before many of us were even probably in your jobs, or here as city council members, that it's confusing, it's legalistic, it is what we hear often, and it's been transparent recently because of the efforts of Mr. Cardenas and Missakowski to do that. But I think that we should learn some lessons from this process in the future. There's been some good things, but a lot about planning and transparency that we need to improve in the future. So, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
I want to contribute because it's so important. And what you said, Wendy, though, I just wanted to act upon. Decisions made, no processes. This has been a great challenge for people who've gone before us, and people who are here now, and people in the future. And as others has mentioned so eloquently, it's to stand up and make the right decision. Jim Ritchie, if you could come over here just for a second here, and walk this out, because I want to see how simple it is. We talk about safety. This string on this great bottle of DWP water, start walking out there by the center aisle there, right there. Keep walking. This is the distance, folks, 50 feet. Keep walking. You're going to pass the mayor of El Segundo, I think, if you go out that way, Jim. I appreciate you. Go out that aisle, Jim. Right in there. I just want you to see how small, Mr. Parks. We don't want to wait. I remember the call, I was on my way to Musso Frankston Hollywood when there was a tragedy in the airport. Right there, Jim, here's 50 feet, keep going. How narrow this is right here, this is all we're asking for. Right there, Janice, 50 feet to make it safer. 50 feet to make it safer for modern aircraft. Look how narrow that is. 50 feet, and it's so important we move now, and not wait. And not wait, Mr. Parks, and not wait, Mr. Villarreal Rosa, and not wait, Mr. Weiss. 50 feet, so it's real important. Members, I also want to say, because I was criticized there, this is one of the longest meetings, and I hadn't even spoken yet, so I want to blame it all on you. But remember, 50 feet for safety, an international airport, the decisions that we make are very important to move forward, to put people to work for safety. We're not protected anywhere. There will be another earthquake in Southern California, as there was in '33 in Long Beach, as there was in '51 at Tehachapi, as there was in '71 in Silmar, as there was in '87 in San Francisco, as there was in '94 in Northridge. There'll be another earthquake. God forbid, but I hate to think there may be another tragedy of someone attacking this country, and they may attack Los Angeles. But we know we're prepared, because we're working hard, and we're trying to do the absolute best, but we can't prevent an earthquake, and we hopefully will be able to prevent a terrorist attack through a combination efforts of many levels of government. But our Los Angeles International Airport, and the leadership put... But our Los Angeles International Airport, and the leadership put forth on this term right now, and I really want to thank someone who I'm very proud of, the city Ms. Akowski, because she's worked very hard, and her staff has worked very hard in trying to resurrect something so we do the right thing. This city is great because people came before us and made decisions that had lifelong impacts, whether it's water, whether it's the ports, and Phineas Fanning, whether it's the railroads that came transcontinental across to this city, and this airport, and Minesfield. The last time a city dollar was paid was in 1928, and Minesfield was purchased. Those city dollars will be paid for this improvement, will be paid by the airport department. So I want to thank all those who worked very hard. I asked for an "I" vote, and 50 feet for safety, 50 feet for the future, and I thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labangez. All right. And that officially does it for the first round of council discussion. From this point forward, we're now hearing from members of the council speaking for a second time each, so colleagues, be warned, the three-minute rule will be more strictly enforced. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned in my stop that I would start with the security issue, and I'm glad that I had a chance to listen to Mr. Weiss's presentation. One of the things between the two reports that Mr. Weiss talked about, RAND 1 and RAND 2, is RAND 1 was done from the outside. In that report, RAND said, we didn't have access to a lot of information, and the criticism and some of the concerns were well-founded. RAND 2 is a LA World Airport Study. RAND is now in the room. You heard others in the past criticize RAND and say RAND doesn't know what they're talking about, RAND shouldn't be there. RAND is now in partnership with us. The RAND report that we caused to be commissioned is commissioned because RAND is now, you heard our executive director say, we have an advanced planning team. Who is a subcontractor as part of that advanced planning team? RAND. What did RAND do and gave to us before we started to deliberate today, a briefing which says near-term options for improving security at LAX? It doesn't say, go do a new master plan. It says, while you're doing a master plan, there are real concerns. We're supposed to be running an airport every day. These people at the table are running an airport every day. What is the template? What is the starting point about what we should be doing? They gave us some real-term, near-term ideas. The executive director says, we're going to be responding to our own board and the city council about those near-term ideas. But better than that, these two reports, the LAX plan says, every project should be looked at through a security microscope. RAND is now that advanced planning team microscope. Our study, specific plan, says before we do, we'll do the green light projects with RAND and with security and with specific concerns enhancing it, but before we do anything else, when we do that comprehensive study, we need a full comprehensive study on the cost-benefit analysis of all the projects at that time. Members, it's very, very clear that the green light projects, there is consensus. We need to get them done now, not three years from now. Some of my colleagues did say, gee, hasn't cost gone up? Why has cost gone up? Because in the 30 months we've been discussing this, we've had construction costs go up, and many of our friends in labor will be able to tell us that. If we don't get the green light projects for which there is consensus, they're not redundant, they're important, they're going to solve air quality somewhat, even in their own, we put everything out for another 30 months to study everything comprehensively, and we can add another 30-month cost on just starting. The green lights, there's no question. Let's get them going, let's study, let's have the city council, the board of airport, let's have RAND in the room to study those things we still have questions about, environmentally analyze them, environmentally analyze whether there's other alternatives, but get those elements, those important elements in the first phase of the master plan underway as soon as possible. I will end with a quote back from my colleague Eric Garcetti. Members, I don't know how many of you have ever seen this in my desk. It sits here and stares me every day. We heard Gil Lindsay quoted yesterday, saying, I have friends on one side and friends on the other. This is my favorite Gil Lindsay quote, "How come around City Hall it takes so long to get nothing done? We can't afford it anymore, we've said that. Let's do it. We can get something done and do more in the future." That's what this plan provides.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Ms. Perry.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. President. I'm going to wrap up, and I said earlier that I would work with Ms. Misakowski and bring in the outstanding issues regarding El Segundo Inglewood, and as of today, I got some information from Culver City to resolve those issues, not only in construction but post-construction. And I also want to raise this issue with you, because I want to follow up on this as well, myself, and I know Mr. Parks shares my concern, as we had a large community meeting on the jobs portion of what the airport means, and not only, again, in construction but post-construction, long-term, for myself representing an area like Skid Row, I made a comment that day that I wanted to see a strategy in place to reach out to groups like Chrysalis and to groups like Midnight Mission, and for those opportunities, not just on the apprenticeship side, and I'm going to ask you to clarify for me what percentage of jobs are dedicated to the apprenticeship classification, as well as non-union opportunities for community people. And I want to see a citywide strategy in place that is very broad, all-encompassing, that levels a playing field, so that everybody in each council district has an opportunity to feed individuals from their community who are disenfranchised, homeless and recovering, people who have felony convictions, have served their time, enough time has passed, and they want to work with a recognized community agency to get employment and to get an opportunity. I want to see that strategy in place as well, and I want it to be citywide so that we can provide an access point. A good example of where to start on that is the Staples Agreement. When Mr. Parks and I had our community meeting, we were struck by the fact that many of the people we invited were in the flight path and had not even been contacted or ever reached out to on the issue of employment opportunities, and these are people on the flight path. So I'm going to follow up on this in a subsequent meeting with you and Ms. Misakowski, but I want you to know that that issue still remains very high on my list with the air quality issues.
And, Jim Ritchie, if I just may answer that too, by telling you that your invitation or Mr. Parks's invitation to your town hall meeting, we took away from that the importance you placed on the ex-offenders. I've met with Mr. David Glover myself. As we craft the memorandum of understanding with CDD, we intend to include the homeless, the ex-offenders. I don't have that percentage, but it will be crafted in. The coalition was accepting of that, and I presented it as a city position from our side of the table going in, so you'll see more in it.
It's got to be very broad. Understood.
Ms. Ha.
Thank you, Mr. President. After Tom's PowerPoint presentation, I call for the question.
Previous question has been called. We do have five members still waiting to speak for a second time, so let's open the roll on the previous question. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll on the previous question. And tabulate to vote.
Nine ayes, six noes.
Okay. Since we still have people waiting to speak for a second time, we'll continue discussion. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. In this discussion, we've heard many concerns, and I appreciate Councilman Weiss's overview of the security issues, but I'm hoping we're all hearing the same thing. Not to beat a dead horse, but the specific plan will allow us to fold in every one of these issues as the time passes. The critical factor here is to make this master plan come to life, give it the energy it needs, the funding it needs, funding that's waiting for us in DC to stimulate the economy the way we can. And so it's very clear to me that the most pragmatic thing to do is say yes, move on, is get to December 7th with all the different issues that'll arise between now and then, and say yes again, and move on. But I do want to take a moment to thank some of the folks who've been working really hard, and for me, the unsung heroes are the planning department, the folks who've been working many, many hours in this process, going back to the neighborhood council meetings, APCs, the commission, the airport hearings, and on and on and on. So I just want to thank the planning department for their hard work. Many of them are in the audience, so thank you for your hard work. Many guys, it's a thank this job. They spend many hours in the night, just like many of us, just want to thank you for that, and the airport and their staff for the forthrightness. You've made it very clear to us that by sharing information, we'll have a better sense of security in terms of how we're moving forward, and more than anything, I think each one of us is incumbent upon us to understand what a specific plan does so that we can deal with the issues of how we can improve that process. As good as it is today, there's always room for improvement. So again, thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
If you could hold my time, I've got some questions for the city attorney. Just a series of questions, if you could hold it during the responses, I'd appreciate it. Just to clarify, Ms. Cullen, some of the discussion that we heard earlier today, some supporters of the proposal before us have indicated that removing the yellow light projects would require recirculation of the EIR. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily. The city first has to conduct a preliminary redesign of the master plan to remove the yellow light projects and determine whether there are potential environmental impacts from removal. We've indicated in our report to you that we think that that stage will take three to six months to complete, and at the completion, the city will be able to take a look at what they will do from there, whether recirculation will be necessary.
To determine if recirculation will be necessary.
After that redesign, we'll determine if recirculation is necessary.
What are the potential environmental consequences that need to be studied?
Well, we made a list in our letter to you.
But in its essence.
Your committee, what we think.
In its essence, what would you, how would you just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, road traffic noise, construction traffic noise off airport, construction equipment noise off airport, mitigation projects for off-airport noise impacts, on-airport surface transportation impacts, off-airport surface transportation impacts, mitigation projects for surface transportation impacts, air quality impacts from airport traffic and operations and ground transportation and airport construction, light emissions from airport operations and construction, other construction impacts, human health risk assessment, safety impacts, fire protection and law enforcement impacts.
Am I correct in assuming that basically the city would need to determine if there are environmental impacts caused by removing the GTC and its related components that would require additional mitigation efforts? Is that understanding correct?
Could you repeat that?
Basically, the city would need to determine if there are environmental impacts caused by removing the GTC and its related components that would require additional mitigation efforts.
Correct.
Okay.
And keep in mind that for NEPA, it doesn't necessarily have to be negative.
The city council's been told a number of times that the yellow light projects can be eliminated at some point in the future after the completion of additional studies. How does the process required to delete these projects in the future differ from the process required to delete them now?
The process to delete them would be, under CEQA, would be the same. We would still need an initial study, and we would have to determine whether further environmental work would be necessary. The difference would be that you can go forward on the green light projects now.
But the process for removing the yellow lights under CEQA is the same, whether you do it now or do it later.
The process, the process under CEQA, looking at whether there are impacts, would be the same under CEQA now or later.
Okay. Now, a number of folks have raised the specter of litigation against the city regarding approval of this plan. We all know that that's a potential. Under, is it possible that removal of the yellow light projects could in some way limit the city's risks of litigation?
I believe that removing the yellow light projects may reduce the number of potential litigants, but it would not necessarily make the document that we have, documents we have before you more defensible.
Now, there are lots of policy considerations that policymakers have to weigh with regard to my minority report that I'll be moving shortly, and with the plan that's been put forward before the council, and it's fair that there be such policy differences. Aside from any policy considerations, is either the plan that is before us or the Plum Minority Report legally preferable?
If you, if the council approves the minority report, we will make sure that all the appropriate studies are conducted. We can't guarantee what the FAA will do and what, you know, in their EIS and in their determination, but we will make sure that if that's the policy decision the council makes, we'll make sure that all the studies that are done in that.
Could you hold my time, please? Is it fair to say that essentially what we face is a policy decision, not a legal decision?
I've always said that you are making a policy decision today. There are legal and practical ramifications from that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. Colleagues, I would move that we substitute the minority report here for the full committee report.
Is there a second?
The reality, colleagues, is that I agree strongly with my friend and neighbor Ms. Misakowski, that the green light projects have merit and that they should be implemented and that we should work on them immediately. The reality is also that under the minority report, which I have moved before you, staff would spend the next few months reconfiguring the body of work that is before us today to draft a more limited and honest LAX plan. And in the meantime, improvements to LAX should not and would not stop. I believe the estimate for the report backs from, on the RAND projects is, it's in the two-to-three-month period in terms of the near-term RAND matters, that's what you told us previously at the committee, something in that range. So I'm hopeful that we can get started on that quickly. I believe that by eliminating the yellow light projects, we are actually reducing the city's risk of litigation, as we are reducing the pool of potential litigants against this city. We are also doing something else that is very important. We would be honest with the people of the city about what we're approving and what we're not approving. One of the most troubling aspects of this debate is that when this debate is over, if someone asks you, hey, what did you approve today? You won't be able to tell them, because some people will leave this room or leave this building and say that Manchester Square has been approved, and some will leave the room and say, not so fast, the brakes have been put on Manchester Square. In my view, there should only be one answer to the question, what have you approved today? As far as honesty with the public is concerned, and as far as honesty with the judge who in the future will hold the fate of the airport's modernization prospects in his or her hands. We need to be honest now with the public so that we can be honest with the judge later, because that is where this is going. And I want to say to my friends in the front row from organized labor, I'll conclude right now, that I share and share deeply your concerns about creating viable jobs in connection with these projects. I share those concerns. I want to see the $3 billion of the green light projects go forward. I also want to see LAX maintained as a healthy economic engine for this region. My concern is, is that if we proceed today with what's before us, this will be an economic engine for lawyers, not for workers, and we could very well find ourselves back at square one after lengthy and costly litigation. That is not a good way to get those $3 billion of needed green light projects accomplished. I encourage all of you, have an open mind, vote for the minority report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Veregosha.
Yes, Mr. President, members, if you could hold my time for questions. Question to Kim Day or any of the people sitting down. If Alternative D is about approving security, why are we being asked to receive, to approve it rather, before a full, independent review of security that the city is paying the RAND corporation to be completed?
Well, I think the answer is, what you're being asked to approve is a conceptual master plan, a programmatic development, and it is not really until we get the specific projects developed through the advanced planning and we bring them forward to you with their individual RAND studies that you will be asked to vote on those particular projects.
Now, Councilmember Weiss and others have proposed moving to immediately implement the recommendations in the current RAND study of existing conditions. Is there any Is there any reason we should not do this at this time?
We have committed to be back to the Plum Committee in 90 days with regard to the checkpoints and within 120 days with regard to the density in the terminals. As we, the RAND report looked at these issues solely with regard to security. We're now looking at airport operations, we're looking at traffic, we're looking at other aspects. We will come back to you with a recommendation, within three to four months on each one of those.
As Mr. Weiss has said, and I concur, we support, a number of us support, the green light projects. A $3 billion investment in infrastructure and jobs that won't happen for about, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of six years. We've already said the entire project is somewhere 11 or 12 years. Why didn't LAWA construct Alternative D in its environmental clearance in a manner that would have allowed for an approval process that unequivocally facilitated breaking off controversial or objectionable elements from one another? Why didn't we do that from the very beginning?
Well, I'd like to address that if I could, from the standpoint of the total scope of the master plan. We're looking at an airport that has had, depending on whether you're looking at runways built in the '60s or other modernization efforts that go back 40 years, the nature and the scope of the LAX master plan has always been large. As we go forward with the environmental process, we want to take a look at every opportunity to modernize every component, incorporate those issues of safety and security. Certainly, as we go forward, and the brilliance in Cindy Misakowski's plan, as she has seen controversial issues, we do not become handicapped by this global approval of a project that, again, is a joint federal, state-of-California document. It's important that we get the federal approval, so that as we move forward, we can bring back to this very body those elements, those projects. If it's the GTC or other components, you'll have the opportunity to weigh in on, and if they get scrapped, they get scrapped.
Thank you. On my own time, Mr. President, I arise in opposition to this plan, not because I don't understand how important it is for us to invest in infrastructure in this city. I'm the author of a $9 billion modernization project for our schools that were, provided middle-class jobs for construction workers, the author of prevailing wage in the state of California, the guy who took on Pete Wilson on the eight-hour day. So when people stand up and talk about jobs, let, make no mistake about it, I have an unmitigated, unquestioned record of defending good jobs. But I know that, as Mr. Weiss said, that this project is filled with loopholes, and there's going to be a lawsuit, and that lawsuit's going to stop this. I don't understand why we can't work for the 10 to 30 months that we need to ensure that we have a plan that is not objectionable in terms of lawsuits. I don't understand why we're putting all our airport capacity in one airport. When you go to, when you go to Washington DC, you go to BWI, you go to Dulles, you go to Ronald Reagan. When you go to, when you go to New York, you go to Newark, you go to John F. Kennedy Airport, and you go to LaGuardia. When you go to Chicago, you go to Midway and you go to O'Hare. Why should we put all our airport capacity? We can create jobs in Ontario, we can create jobs at Palmdale, we can invest in the infrastructure that makes a regional airport a reality. When you look at this region, where are the fastest-growing parts of the region? The fastest-growing parts of the region are in the east, so why not build for Ontario? The other fastest-growing parts of the region are in the north county. Why not create an airport where San Francisco, where folks from the San Fernando Valley and even San Franciscans can come with a high-speed rail infrastructure investment? When you look at a regional airport, why should 36% of the passengers that use LAX come from Orange County? We are not addressing the regional need here. If we put all of our $11 billion in LAX, there will never be the money to build Ontario, never be the money to build Palmdale. That's what it takes. It takes an infrastructure investment that, to me, we're not prepared to make here when we put all our duckets at LAX. I rise against this measure because it doesn't do what we should do in terms of a regional airport. At the end of the day, the jobs that they talk about will never be created because of the lawsuits. It doesn't put a cap on the passenger traffic in the way that we could by reducing the gates even further. And finally, it does not address the security concerns in Manchester Square that I believe are necessary to protect in the fight against terror. Thank you so much.
Mr. Parks.
Order, please. All right, folks, I'm going to ask for order, and Sergeant, please help me out if there's folks who are not willing to cooperate here. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm always amazed that democracy only works when people want to hear what they want to hear. But the one thing I'd like to just ask, a couple of questions. I was a little unclear when you answered a question or answered Mrs. Gruel, and then when you said, "Let me say it another way," it made it even less clear. In reality, when we vote today, if it's a yes vote, are we approving everything in Plan D?
Well, no. Actually, all today, your voting is an intent that in December, you're going to vote for Alternative D. But that aside, I think your real question, what you're, what you're voting for is a overall program that includes some projects that have an easier approval process in the future and some that have a harder one.
I mean, but we're approving everything that's in the plan?
No, you're approving a land use plan and a process that will have us come back and put each individual project before you in the future.
Okay. When you mentioned the process part, are we talking about, as you mentioned, every plan comes back to the city, I mean, to the city council? Now, with that, are we saying, you also commented that some things require a 10-vote to bring forward. Are we saying everything comes naturally or routinely? Or is it that you go forward as a commission, and then we have to vote on whether we agree or disagree?
We're going to need the city attorney to tell us how many votes you would need when we bring forward the projects.
Let me ask first, is, does it come routinely? Does it just come here?
It comes routinely to you. You don't have to take jurisdiction of it like you do under Section 245.
Okay. What was the issue of where you said if the commission went forward on something that we'd have to vote?
For the green light projects only. When those projects come to council, council has 10, has 30 days in which to act on those. If you don't act at all in that 30 days, the commit, the airport commission's determination stands. If within that 30 days, you want to modify or deny one of the green light projects only, then it takes 10 votes.
Okay.
The yellow light projects are always only eight votes in the city council. Always, always. That's the difference.
Thank you. Let me just comment, and one thing I'd like, Mr. Tabor, is he still here? Because I'd just like to ask a question on the community benefit package. One of the things that's unclear is how did the coalition come together and represent the community, and how did that come about?
Councilman, Councilman Parks, the coalition began as a discussion amongst community groups about where, what position they wanted to take with respect to the measure before this council, Plan D, and then the alternative consensus plan. And as we began to think about it, we decided that we really were talking about a specific geographic area, which included the communities in Los Angeles, east of the airport, Inglewood, southeast Los Angeles, and Lenox. And we began to focus our discussion about how and what within that community. At about the same time, this is October of 2003, about that time period, some of the organizers had conversations with representatives of El Segundo, Westchester, about the desire to organize a broad coalition to seek input into the process and to represent the voices of the community members, not, I think it was earlier put on that it was large organizations, but we really wanted to get down to a grassroots level. It was decided by representatives of Westchester and El Segundo that they had another approach that they wished to pursue, that they were not interested in negotiating towards a community benefit agreement at the time. And so the area was defined as Inglewood, Lenox, southeast Los Angeles. At that point, we began to seek out representatives from various sectors of the community, the religious community, churches, church organizations, the business community, neighborhood organizations, neighborhood councils, block clubs. We wanted to make sure that the school districts that represented these communities, Inglewood and Lenox, were involved. We were aware that Los Angeles Unified School District had an ongoing dialogue with LAWA because of the schools that were already planned to be closed and other impacts. We were aware that the city of Los Angeles, through LAWA's direction, operated the sound insulation program directly through the city, so we wanted to make sure that the counties' community that was impacted, that had a program that was ongoing, residents in Inglewood where there was an ongoing sound insulation program, were involved. And that was our process and has been. It's still, it's, the coalition has the ability to grow. People could come, individuals or organizations could join us. But the point that I want to make clear is that the focus of the coalition is the seeking of a political solution towards the mitigations of problems that have plagued this community for a very long time, or these communities for a very long time, and not a litigious solution. We recognize when the environmental organizations got involved, when the school district got involved, that we had organizations that historically had the ability to sue in court to prevent the plan from going forward. They thought about their participation in the coalition and have agreed to move forward through a negotiated process, always obviously reserving the right to litigate, but believe that their best interest is served if we can, through a contractual obligation that this community benefit agreement would be, can negotiate a plan in the best interest of the community. And it's precedent setting, because this is the first time that these types of organizations have come together to work together towards this solution.
The one thing I'm concerned, and we have yet to find somebody that lives in the eighth district that's a part of it, and I think we brought that to your attention and to the airport's attention, and I think you had a meeting and said, basically, you voted not to allow that, even though you're talking about the southeast communities. So we still don't have anyone representing a resident of the eighth district.
Councilman Parks, I'm going to respond respectfully. The vote we had was about, and this probably opened up another discussion, but the vote we had within the coalition was about representatives of elected officials or elected officials themselves sitting as part of the coalition in negotiating process.
That wasn't the question we asked. We asked the representation of the eighth district.
No, we didn't have, we did not have a vote to exclude anyone from the eighth district. As a matter of fact, we not only asked your office and at the meeting we had with you and Councilman Perry for names of organizations we should be meeting with, we began to have those meetings and as a result, had additional meetings with neighborhood councils and other organizations seeking their input. We even went back, as a result of some of those meetings, to LAWA and said that we'd wanted to, in essence, set aside our previous agreement that we would not add new issues to the list of demands that we were negotiating around, and as a result, incorporated some of those issues that were brought up at the community meetings we had, subsequent to the meeting we had with you and Councilman Perry.
Did you say you met with them, but you didn't add them to the, to the coalition?
It is, it's by their voluntary choice to become coalition. Those organizations that we met with, that you identified.
What we were advised after the meeting is that there was a vote, we never asked, from my perspective, that elected official be on. We brought forward to you that our community had met and wanted to be a part of it, and the question, the response came back, there was a vote that they couldn't be a part of it, that it was not voted on, that they could be added.
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay. Let me just say that it's my intent today, after all the discussion and about an 18-month review of this, that I'm not going to vote for D or the consensus for a number of reasons. One, I don't think the fact that the city spent 10 years and $100 million voting on the wrong, or viewing the wrong master plan should be validated by my vote, that we should be, should have been looking at for the last 10 years, $100 million on a master plan for air transportation in this region. I also don't believe that we will see these $3 billion worth of jobs, as was stated by Mr. Villarosa, because litigation is going to tie it up. And rather than spend money, as we've done in the past, on litigation, we should spend it on the product. The other issues that I'm concerned about is that we have still yet to deal and satisfy people east of Inglewood as it relates to dealing with the issues of mitigation, health, traffic, and those issues. And then when we think about the other concerns that are forthcoming, that, again, this plan does not seem to cover all of the issues, and I agree with Mr. Weiss and second his motion, that as we go forward, the things that we should do is wrap up the green light projects and another master plan, go forward on that, and we should begin to work on a regional plan of four airports, and then secondarily, a long-term regional plan dealing with the six counties within this region. Otherwise, we will never get to that if we spend our money all in one place. There will not be a will. Where will there be money? And I think the only way to deal with this is to have a red light, green light, green light projects that people agree with, red light the other ones, and move forward on the regional plan.
Thank you. Mr. Carradines.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little bit of housekeeping. As the chairman of the Commerce Committee, I just wanted to say that that is a friendly amendment made by Mr. Ludlow regarding the Community Benefits Package Plan discussion to be coming to my committee. So with that, I also would like to ask the city attorney a question. Is what we are doing today futile? Will this plan be stopped by the courts if we were to pass it today and in December?
No. As I've answered before, that the courts in California will not enjoin us if they find, our understanding is that the lawsuits would involve CEQA challenges, and the courts won't enjoin our, our continued development of the master plan. They might send us back in the worst-case scenario to do different or more work under CEQA, but it would not be futile, no.
So is it, it is in no way, I mean, you're our attorney, it is in no way inevitable that what we're doing about adopting a master plan for LAX is going to be thwarted and stopped by the courts?
No. As a matter of fact, you know, we are prepared to approve, as to form and legality, all the documents you have in front of you. We think that, we've reviewed the environmental documents, and we believe that we can adequately defend this.
So the fact of the matter, members, is I've gone through a lot of scrutiny on this, on this issue, and the issue isn't just one issue, it's many. We are, in fact, talking about, whether you call them green-lighted or yellow-lighted components of the master plan. What we're discussing today and what we're going to be talking about and voting on today and through the next six weeks, we're going to be voting on an issue of a master plan as a whole, as a whole. We're not going to be voting on one component. We're voting on a master plan as a whole. As it is, I'd like to commend LAWA, Ms. Misakowski, the mayor's office, everybody who was involved in allowing this to go forward and imposing additional requirements on components of this plan, specifically what we call the yellow components of this plan, to say, "We will, in addition to the basic minimal requirements, we are going to allow and expect that additional votes will be required of the city council, additional scrutiny, additional additions to the EIR scrutiny as well." That's what we're talking about here. So I don't see in any way that what we're doing today is futile. And as a matter of fact, I think we need to keep our eye on the prize. Many people around this council chambers today have pointed out some very important facts. When Greg Smith flies around the world, or anybody flies around the world, and we come back to LAX, it is embarrassing. It is embarrassing. In addition to that, security of today, after 9/11, is a different world. We have an opportunity to address it the best we can. Ms. Misakowski pointed out that all of the yellow-lighted projects will, in fact, have a RAND study attached to it, specifically talking about security and whatever other litany of issues RAND is ready and willing to comment on and to give their expertise on. So the bottom line is, we are talking about something that's good for LAX. It's good for security. It's good for the community. And in addition to that, I am for more good jobs for as many good people of the community of Los Angeles and beyond. And I don't think it's futile, and I don't see it to be futile to take, to take this work. And we are human beings, so there is no such thing as a perfect plan. This flawed work, if you want to call it that, to move forward, to not be afraid and to say this is futile. For God's sakes, if that was the mindset of the human beings and the leaders throughout history, we would have nothing to rest on their laurels. We would have nothing. This is a difficult decision. We need to make the right decision, move forward and continue the scrutiny, and continue to make sure that we hold everyone accountable at every turn. I'm for this plan.
Mr. Ludlow.
I'd like to call the question.
Question has been called. Let's open the roll on the previous question. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Let's close the roll on the previous question and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, that ends discussion. Now, we do have items 30 through 36 before us, and the city attorney and the city clerk agree that we can vote on. agree that we can vote on all the items concurrently.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just to let the council know, there is a community impact statement that has been submitted by the neighborhood council of Westchester Playa del Rey. Do you wish me to read that into the record or?
Please do.
As president of the neighborhood council of Westchester Playa del Rey, I wish to enter the following community impact statement. The neighborhood council of Westchester Playa del Rey rejects the LAX master plan alternatives A, B, C, and D due to their excessive costs and negative impacts on the community. We further note that alternatives A, B, and C overtly increase capacity. While the neighborhood council board has rejected the LAX master plan alternatives presented thus far, the board does support a safe and secure LAX and would be willing to work with LAWA, the airlines, and other communities in developing an LAX master plan, which is directly tied to a truly regional solution with implementation budgets and schedules.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions on that community impact statement? If not, any procedural questions? We were about to move forward with the vote. Mr. City Attorney?
President, Mr. President?
Okay. Mr. Parks, just for colleagues, as a point of information, Mr. Parks has requested separate votes on each of the items. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, we have separate votes on each item. It's too confusing to just do them collectively.
I don't think there's going to be a big objection there. Ms. Misakowski?
No, I was just going to say that the two committee chairs had indicated that all of the amendments that were made today, and one was put on the desk yesterday, are friendly amendments. They are instructions to the committee report in terms of reporting back.
Okay. So we have items 30 through 36.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
We also have a majority report and minority report that have been moved.
Okay. And the first vote would be on the question of whether to substitute the minority report for the majority report.
Ask for a no vote.
Is that clear? This is a motion to substitute the minority report for the majority report. A yes vote is in favor of the minority report, a no vote is in favor of the majority report. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, 12 noes.
That does not carry.
Okay. The majority report is now before council. That would be item number 30 with all its amendments. That would be A through F.
Okay. Item 30 now before us, the majority report. Please open the roll. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, three noes.
Next item, please.
And I'm sorry, Mr. President. Just to let council know, then, items, recommendations in number 30 and 31 would be back before council on December 7th, and that would be 2 through 14 on 30 and 2 through 16 on 31.
Okay.
Excuse me, that would just be on 30 right now.
Next item.
Next item before council is item number 31, and that's the Commerce, Energy, Natural Resources Report.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, three noes.
That, too, is approved.
And the recommendations 2 through 16 will be back before council.
Next item.
Item number 32 is a Plum CENR report.
Please open the roll. Roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Items 33 through 35 are related. There are all Plum reports relative to Culver City Appeal on tentative tracks. Do you wish to vote on those together?
Separately, please.
Okay. Item number 33 then would be the first vote, and that's a Plum report.
Please open the roll on item 33. Please close the roll on item 33 and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
That is approved.
Item number 34 is also a Plum report relative to Culver City Track Appeal.
Okay. Please open the roll on item 34. Close the roll on item 34 and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Okay. Item number 35 is also a Plum report relative to Culver City Appeal Track Map.
Okay. Please open the roll on item 35. Close the roll on item 35. Everybody get a chance to vote there? Let's reopen the roll on this item. Roll is open. Members, press your buttons. Close the roll on item 35. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
That is approved as well.
Okay. The last item is item number 36, and that's a Plum CENR report relative to noting and finding board of supervisors communication.
Okay. Please open the roll on item 36. Roll is open on item 36. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
That is approved as well.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Parks.
I'd like to change my vote on 35. Should be a no vote.
Okay. That doesn't change the outcome of the vote.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, we go forthwith?
Forthwith on 30 through 36. That doesn't for the LAX-related matters for today.
No. It's not, that doesn't do it. We have to go to the special committee.
Oh, that's right.
Special agenda.
One more, one more item.
(LAUGHING).
And what else is remaining on the desk?
As far as the regular meeting, that would be then clearing the desk for closed sessions, housekeeping items, and the closed session item is still on.
Okay. Before doing that, let's temporarily recess the regular meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohan, LaBonde, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarogosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, 15 members present and afore, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. I believe we have a one-item agenda. Ms. Misakowski?
Mr. President, this is what Plum had sent to us a few weeks ago. It was the amendment to the general plan, which says the Westchester Playa del Rey community plan is the superseding plan, and the LAX plan is a part of it, not the other way around. This was an amendment that unanimously passed the council. We had speakers from the Westchester community who spoke in favor of it. No one is opposed. It's a technical amendment, but an important technical amendment. I ask for an aye vote.
Okay. But we do have a couple of members of the public wishing to address the council on this. So let's have a brief public hearing and hear from Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, to be followed by Cecil Carpio and Diane Sombraño.
We've got one more vote here.
Would the three of you come forward at this time?
Let's just state consistency. Let us get through this.
Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, Cecil Carpio, Diane Sombraño, are you here? Now is your time.
Yes, councilpersons, I just want to say that way back when Ruth Galanter had put together a planning advisory committee to speak on things like Manchester Square and the effects of the airport on the community, well, what happened was basically, once they went through their hoops and did the work for over two years, and their work came before committees, their work was pretty much just left in the dust. I hope that what happens with this amendment is that, for one thing, the stakeholder liaison has, is, should be defined now. And who would that liaison represent? It's really important to continue to keep the community involved in the process. And what has happened is that the community continues to see broken promises, and that has to change. Somehow, somewhere, that has to change. So in recognizing that the LAX plan is a part of and needs to be represented in the Westchester Playa del Rey community plan, and that these two things aren't separate from each other, they are integral, and that the community plan is part of this process, well, you know what? Doggone it, the community plan has already happened, and it was, and LAX was left out of that plan.
Let me ask you to conclude so we can hear from the other speakers, please.
I'll conclude right now. Define, please, someone ask how the definition of a stakeholder liaison is going to be defined and who that liaison will represent.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And then Mike Stevens to follow.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Sombraño, and having gone to most of the LAX hearings, this is a very integral thing that you're going to be voting on, and it kind of sets the pattern of what you just past tense did. In the past, that statement said that the community should do that which LAX wanted, and that's precisely what you just did. And now you're coming back and saying, well, wait a minute, the airport probably should care about the people around it. What a concept. Isn't that amazing? Did you notice that every one of your neighborhood councils in that area, those people affected by noise, pollution, and traffic, not the cash, but the burden bearers were disregarded in your last votes? Congratulations. Now you're going to go back and pretend that you care about the community. I hope the people of that area who vote, by the way, they didn't vote for the person that currently represents them, she was put in there, will remember this, as your constituents do as well.
Thank you. Mike Stevens?
Yes, my name is Mike Stevens. I'm president of a group called LAX Expansion Now. We started this organization back in 1998, later joined a group called R SAC, was a board member, resigned from R SAC because R SAC was political. We are an educational group only. Now we find ourselves in a situation where now you're getting ready, you're saying, well, we're involving the public, but you're not involving the public. Public's been negated. Ms. Misakowski was assigned to the district that surrounds, that surrounds LAX. She was not elected. That's reality. The public has been disenfranchised through this entire process. And Ms. Hahn, when you come to Westchester next time, we'll be out there. Our finances, because of you and others, were dissolved. People withdrew their money, the institutions that were helping us. But the reality is this, as far as educating the public, the reality is this, is that Danny Tabor, this coalition, six members, two of which was Ms. Carpio, Ms. Sombraño at the first meeting, the mayor last night at city council meetings said he has no value as far as representing the public. Yet you're using him almost as a catalyst for saying, well, the people are represented. Reality is, is that people aren't represented. They're not represented.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Ms. Misakowski, you're, okay.
That's an aye vote. This is, as was indicated, the part of making LAX a part of the Westchester plan. The Westchester plan is the governing community plan. Stakeholder is divided. Stakeholder in the LAX plan says, stakeholder liaison, liaison will be in consultation with stakeholders, including adjacent residential and business communities, airline representatives, airport concessionaires, cargo and freight forwarders, labor representatives, business organizations, and neighborhood councils. That's in the plan.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this side? If not, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That item is approved unanimously. Okay. Forthwith on that as well. Next item.
That's all for the special meeting.
Okay. Let's go back to, let's recess that, or adjourn that, excuse me, and go back to the regular meeting.
On the regular meeting, Mr. President, there still is the closed session. Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let's clear desk first.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those items are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Tuesday, October 26th, for city business that meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. We're at 2:00. Plum is supposed to begin at 2:00, so we're going to try to schedule for 2:30. Hopefully we'll get through closed session and commence at that time.
Okay. Plum at 2:30. We'd like to go forthwith on item number 29. Please, Madam Clerk. And, Mr. City Attorney, is there something else?
And for the record, Councilman Parks is required to recuse himself from item number 28.
Okay. All right. We will now go in accordance with California state law. Mr. Stein has a comment before that?
We have a scheduled personnel committee meeting at 2:00, and we will convene that a half hour after we conclude this council session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stein. We will now, in accordance with California state law, be going to close executive session for conferring on legal matters before us, and we'll go back into open session on any decisions we make resolving that issue. If we can, please clear the council chambers. All right. Welcome back into open session, colleagues. We have a settlement offer before us. Madam Clerk, please, for the record, describe it.
There's one item before council, item number 28, and that's settlement in the case of Mauro Garcia versus City of Los Angeles et al., and the amount of settlement is $220,000.
Okay. If we can open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That settlement is approved. Next order of business?
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Sorry, Mr. Weiss?
An announcement I want to make.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want everybody to know that they were here a few months ago, but the Red Cross will once again be holding a blood drive at City Hall this Thursday and Friday, tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the so-called fourth-floor media room. Ever seen any media in the fourth-floor media room? Just when, just when Mr. Smith was getting a needle stuck in his arm a few weeks ago. But if folks can make that, that would be great. If you can't make it and you want to donate blood, call the Red Cross at 1-800-GIVE-LIFE. Thank you, Mr. President.
Fourth-floor media rooms, I think, right next to the fourth-floor blog, if I'm not mistaken, but.
That's right. And possible posting on the fourth-floor blog immediately.
Right after.
After you, after you give, I, I'll, I've got my contacts.
Great.
I'll see what I can do.
Thank you. Mr. Ludlow, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow is the New Leaders Take a Youth to Work Day. For those of you that are familiar, the New Leaders is an organization that has been doing a lot of great outreach with young professionals in South Los Angeles. Tomorrow, there's, they're going to continue their program that they started in '97, where they're encouraging African-American professional males, working males, to mentor young African-American males who have not yet entered the working world. And so we'll be sponsoring a young person for the day, and I would encourage everybody who can to contact the New Leaders and help out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Reyes?
I just want to take a moment to, again, thanks to Planning Department. Yesterday, the reason why I wasn't here is that I was attending a luncheon, an awards luncheon, the statewide planning association. And evidently, I got recognized on a statewide basis for the work we've been doing on behalf of the city and all the different policies we're promoting to generate housing and mixed use development, all the good stuff we've been doing. The reason I wanted to mention that is I want to thank the Planning Department for their hard work, the area planning commissioners, the commission, and everyone involved in the policy development of the city, because it truly is a reflection of their work. So I just want to thank them publicly.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla, back to Mr. Cardenas after that.
And on that same note, colleagues, I do want to congratulate Mr. Reyes. I think he was a little unaware of the magnitude or the significance of this particular award, but as we were walking in this morning, I was struggling to find the right words, and I think finally captured it when I said, this is the Heisman Trophy for planners. And he's very kind to share the credit with the Planning Department and the city family. But I don't think it's a coincidence that it's been Mr. Reyes's vision on planning issues and on his approach to the issue that we've been tackling recently that has put the city and his chairmanship of the committee in the regard that receives this statewide and national recognition. Heaven forbid we have a planner as chair of the planning committee.[1705.58][1705.58](LAUGHING).
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make an announcement of just gratitude, just for the fortune and the opportunity to help the community with the bone marrow drives we've been doing in the Latino community.
the Latino community. It was in these chambers that I was inspired to engage in those drives, and we've had many of them throughout the San Fernando Valley. And I'm proud to say that I got a call a week ago where a person was, had been diagnosed and was looking for a bone marrow donor. They identified a donor out of the drives that we had, and they actually have followed through with a donation of bone marrow. So thank you very much to the community for helping out. See, it works. And also, I wanted to thank my colleague, Jack Weiss. You inspired me to do this, and it's just wonderful, wonderful to see the collective effort of the staff, of the community, of everybody coming out, wanting to do the right thing, and see, we saved a life. Thank you.
That's a wonderful story. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, if I can ask everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I would like us to adjourn today in memory of Ms. Nora King. This was really sad and very unexpected. She was a longtime resident and community leader. She was on the residents' association in Nickerson Gardens for as long as I can remember in Watts, and she just passed away on Tuesday, October twelfth, at the age of seventy. She always seemed a lot younger than that. She served as president of the Nickerson Gardens Resident Management Corporation. She served on countless committees and boards in an effort to improve her community, particularly those who lived in our public housing. She was active in fundraising activities for very, a lot of educational programs, and as well as many endeavors to improve the quality of life in several Los Angeles neighborhoods. During her decades of community services, she received recognition from local, national leaders, including being recognized by the mayor of Los Angeles in nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-five, the city council in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-six, ninety-seven, and by Congress in nineteen ninety-eight, as well as a multitude of community service awards, as her family said, too numerous to mention. She was a graduate of the Leadership Los Angeles Organization and a Peace Corps and a Vista volunteer. She was born the fifth child of three boys and five girls. Nora learned early that family should always come first in her life. She married Monroe King in nineteen fifty-eight and settled in Los Angeles. In addition to being well-known for her love of family and spectacular Thanksgiving dinners that could feed an army, she also leaves behind a community of friends, loved ones, that learn from Nora how to be empowered. She is survived by her four sons, Gary King, Darrell King, Jerome King, and Cedric Evans. She also leaves behind seventeen grandchildren, two sisters, a brother, as well as hundreds of men, women, and children in the community of Nickerson Gardens, whose lives were forever changed because of her steadfast courage, her tireless efforts, and her unwavering faith in God. Nora, for me, was one of those people who continues to hold you accountable whenever you see her, whether it's in private or in a public meeting. She never hesitated to make sure that I listened to her and paid attention to the plight of those in Nickerson Gardens. It was her home that I arrived on the doorstep almost a year ago, when we had the terrible storm over Watts, and her front porch was covered in snow. And we met that night about midnight in her living room to talk about what we might do to make sure that the residents of Watts were properly compensated for the damage that they were suffering. Visitation will be held Thursday from eight to eight at Simpson Family Mortuary, and the funeral service will be eleven AM Friday at Crenshaw Christian Center with an internment to follow at Inglewood Park Cemetery. Nora, we will miss you. We had no idea you were leaving us, but you leave a great legacy.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
And I just wanted to add, I had the pleasure of knowing Nora for many, many years, and Janice is right, she was our conscience. She told it like it was, and no matter where we were. And so she is someone who fought very hard for the residents of not only Nickerson Gardens, but I think all public housing projects. And when it was known nationwide, even when I was at HUD, Nora King had a reputation, and one in which she was to be dealt with, and to be dealt with fairly, and to provide the kinds of services and decent housing for the community of Watts. I join Ms. Han in that.
Thank you. Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn on behalf of Councilmember Jan Perry. Mr. Alfred Sung passed away on October eleventh. He's a former senator, father of Leslie Sung Winner, a former commissioner. He's survived by three daughters, one son, eleven grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. Memorial services will be held on Friday, October twenty-second, at three PM at the USC Davidson Conference Center Vineyard Room.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the council adjourn in the memory of Marine Corporal William Salazar, who was killed October fifteenth at the age of twenty-six by a suicide bomber while on patrol in Al Akbar Province of Iraq. Corporal Salazar enlisted the Marines shortly after nine-eleven terrorist attacks. He served in the combat photographer and videographer, and wanted to follow his father's footsteps in the video industry. His father, Gus Salazar, is a resident Winnetka in my district and bordering Mr. Zine's district. And Corporal Salazar won the National Defense Medal, Sea Service Deployment Ribbon. His colleagues said he was a soldier who loved being a Marine. May Corporal Salazar rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I believe Mr. Cardenas will want to join me in requesting that we adjourn in memory of Alexandra Rebecca Lozano, granddaughter of Joe Lozano from the community of Mission Hills. Alexandra was eleven years old when she lost her battle with cancer just a few days ago. She was an excellent student, had been tested for IQ that was discovered to be one hundred and fifty. She was a ballerina and a cheerleader, just a great child, wonderful, wonderful spirit. She loved spending time playing with her two pet dogs, Coco and Cookie. Her favorite food was posole. She loved riding on her dad's Harley motorcycle, something Mr. Zine can appreciate, and spending quality time with her mom, riding in the van and watching movies. She loved playing baseball and had a passion for dolphins. And just as Mr. Cardenas told the story in the announcement section of being able to save a life, I can stand proud that we were able to touch a life. One of her dreams was to actually be able to meet a dolphin in real life. She had this fascination with dolphins. And when she was diagnosed with cancer and going through treatments and struggling through all of that, we were able to make some phone calls and arrange a visit and a special tour for her at SeaWorld down in San Diego, where she indeed met a dolphin and played with a dolphin. Her family had a tremendous trip there, and she's now in heaven. I ask that we adjourn in her memory.
I'd miss rule to that. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues?